I do that.
You put the get the saline solution and you put it in the end.
I've got it. I've got it.
I do that every single morning and then when I get.
She can barely walk.
And it works?
Oh, yeah.
It clears it out. Um, because it.
Okay.
Struggling now breathing. We don't know how she's doing with her lungs.
So.
I'm gonna do that then. I got one of those.
Yeah. I do that regularly. Like I said, when I'm suffering.
You're even walking in the blindness and the teeth.
Yeah, I'm having. That's. I'm. We'll go with roll call beginning with councillor Bartholomew.
Councillor Bartholomew present.
Council President Vermillion present.
Mayor Kaiser present.
Councillor Childers present.
Councillor Schankel present.
Councillor Gomer present.
Mac.
Mac, are you here?
Assistant City Manager Mac Corthell present.
No, you're not.
Kyle Murphy Code Compliance Specialist present.
City Recorder Christie Tietz present.
Dan Huff City Manager present.
Please note that if a councillor wishes to discuss a major policy issue that that is not on the agenda, it should be raised during new business for consideration at a future work session or meeting, not during the current meeting. Decisions cannot be voted on during the work dur- during the work session. Uh, tonight's discussion will be on uh Malala municipal code ten point seven two point zero two zero. Storage of vehicles or personal property on public property designated time limits. Mister Corthell, can we have your staff report?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm actually gonna defer to Mister Murphy who put together the staff report and has been uh the lead on this project.
Thank you. Good evening, Kyle.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I will, I'll read my staff report here. Staff was directed by the city council to address on-street storage of parking uh of camper trailers and recreational vehicles during this year's annual goal setting. The stated concern is that people are parking their trailers and RVs on the street for extended periods and causing a hazard due to sightlines and bump outs interfering in the function of right-of-way. Uh, some considerations here. Malala citizens have historically utilized the public street for certain activities relating to camper trailers and recreational vehicles in a less restrictive manner than some surrounding cities. Complaints are received and investigated on a case-by-case basis. Staff can continue this process and promote reporting through outreach to further ensure public streets are not being used for long-term camper or RV storage. Some surrounding cities have more restrictive regulations on parking or storage of camper trailers and RVs. City staff can work to revamp the current ordinance to eliminate the administrative burden, which we'll speak about in my presentation around the ten-day rule, which will help enforcement of this ordinance. We did present this at Planning Commission and we received some feedback. And I put some of the Planning Commission note feedback in here. Um, in certain areas, these complaints should be directed to HOA for enforcement. However, HOAs cannot always be trusted to enforce these rules efficiently. Uh, the ten-day rule, which we'll speak about, is difficult to enforce and track. Seventy-two hours per instance would be a fair amount of time for trailer parking on the street. And there should be outreach to the community regarding the temporary extended stay permit, which we will also discuss in my presentation. Christie, is my presentation just attached as the PDF or is there a way to do it on the Canva?
I have it currently set up on the PDF.
Okay.
I I don't have Canva downloaded on on that computer. Sorry.
That's okay. Can I make this full screen? Okay, can everyone read the presentation okay?
It's also, they have it on their screens as well.
Okay, okay. So, to start out, I wanted to talk about the current standards um and just lay those out. So currently, like I said in the staff report, it's complaint-driven. Um, there's a seventy-two hour time limit for all vehicles that applies to passenger cars, motorhomes, campers, RVs. And then the ten days per calendar year. Thanks, Mac.
It's also a touchscreen if you need to.
Is it? Okay. Sorry, I'm new at this.
It's all good.
Okay.
Oh, that's just going forward. Get back to the beginning here.
Full screen down there kinda hidden. There you go.
Okay. So complaint-driven, there's seventy-two hour time limit for all vehicles. Um, the ten days per calendar year applies in front of your own residence only or in front of the residents of which you are a guest. Um, the ten-day rule apply allows time to prep for vacation or is a cheaper alternative for people who have visiting guests and family, cheaper than lodging at hotel rooms and. Um, Malala does offer a recreational ex- vehicle extended temporary extended stay permit, which could also serve that cheaper alternative for lodging. Some of the definitions is the seventy-two hours applies to inoperable vehicles or other motor vehicles, trailer, bus, camper, motorhome, recreational vehicle, boat, or other personal property. So like I said, all vehicles are encompassed in the seventy-two hour rule. The ten-day rule applies specifically to recreational vehicle, motorhome, or camper. ORS defines recreational vehicle as with or without motive power that is designed for use as temporary living quarters. Some examples of surrounding cities' language regarding this issue. On the more restrictive end, you do have cities that say no parking, any trailer, camper, mobile home, boat, motorhome, or other recreational vehicle on any street, alley, or highway for any amount of time. So there are some cities that say you can't park these on the street at all. They have to be on private property one hundred percent of the time. Some other examples include, um, you can park these vehicles on the right-of-way for twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours. The list goes on. So the ten-day exception specifically, some questions that may arise while trying to enforce this code is, how do we know if a trailer belongs to the resident or a guest of the resident? How do we know a trailer has not moved and returned to the site without continuously monitoring it? How long is one day? Because it does just say ten days. It doesn't say however many hours that would be. Um. Some considerations about what we just spoke about. Currently, campers, trailers, and RVs are subject to the same seventy-two hour rule as all other vehicles with the exception of ten days per calendar year, which does create an administrative burden when enforcing parking. City staff can revamp the curtain ordinance to eliminate the administrative burden. The new and improved ordinance can be less restrictive, about the same, but more enforceable or more restrictive. So I have some questions for feedback here. Um, the, I guess the main question would be, how does city council believe the RV, boat, et cetera, parking should be regulated and used within the city? How should our public streets be used for this type of parking?
Do you, are you meaning the, like, how many hours?
Yeah, when I spoke about the more restrictive, less restrictive end, I mean, which side of the spectrum do we wanna fall on there?
I'd like it, I'd personally, I'd like to see, I think it would be a rule that you that you would be able to work with administratively, you know, easier to track and follow if it was in the forty-eight to seventy-two. You know, and that forty-eight to seventy-two is giving people that have trailers and campers extra time. Because originally I was thinking like twenty-four and I've been asking around to some people and they're like, hey, forty-eight hours, you know, forty-eight hours, you know. Some were like, hey, seventy-two, and I'm like, if you need three days to pack your trailer, that's getting a little bit excessive. Well, we get home and we have to work the next day. Well, maybe you need to come home a little bit earlier. But um, but I think I somewhere between the forty-eight and seventy-two hours, I think the ten-day rule, you it that's a nightmare. I mean, the whole thought of it, I can only imagine what you're dealing with at that level, trying to pack, figure out, because, I mean, Rachel Lane, there's a trailer that sits right on that corner before you go into the horn. And it sat there, I mean, I think I was working in there two years ago. And it he didn't care. Dump trucks going by, everything else, tip-outs sticking out. And that that would be another thing to look at too, is if they're parked on the streets for that amount of time, the tip-outs, they, if they're doing something in it, tip-outs can be out, but otherwise they need to be in, especially if it's on this, especially if it's on the street or sidewalk side. And it's just because of the danger of it, a car hitting it or somebody walking into it is, I think would be a danger.
Right, especially if the tip-out's over the top of the sidewalk.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I agree with the mayor. The ten-day rule is is a nightmare. There's no way you can manage that without it just leave that alone, get rid of it. But yeah, um, forty-eight hours at least, you know, to uh give them time to go ahead and pack up, leave the next day, get home, unload, take it to storage the next day, sure. Um, because I know in living in Big Meadow, during this time of year, you get a ton of RVs parked all over the place. And I've on several occasions have seen kids out playing, especially this time of year now they are outside. And they do not look for cars. You know, and and you can't see these kids behind these RVs that are nothing but a blind spot now. Um, you know, large trucks, sometimes you can see it under it or whatever, but these RVs you can't. They're just, and they're same goes for cargo trailers. For instance, I know of a cargo trailer that's probably sat there for several weeks because you got weeds going around it on a public street.
So we may wanna include in our definition for these specifically utility trailer or cargo trailer. Because right now I believe our definition deals specifically with mobile homes and campers.
Right.
The other, the other thing I've seen too is um residents that looks like they're running a landscaping business out of their home because of all the uh equipment parked on the streets. You've got the big one-ton trucks with trailers and all the equipment, just taking up all the the side streets and, you know, their neighbors.
They're running a business out of the house. All their crews are parking their trucks right around the boss's house.
Mm-hmm.
You know, which it causes a burden to the rest of the people that live in the neighborhood.
But yeah, that's a few things that I've observed and I think for the safety reasons primarily, number one, um, get these RVs off the streets as quick as we can.
Okay, thank you.
I'd I'd like to see the seventy-two hour, just because I know how long it takes me to pack up and unpack and do everything else, so.
Okay.
Kind of more in favor of that. Um.
Okay.
Definitely get rid of the ten-day thing. And that should should the RVs, campers be off public streets? I don't agree with that because.
Okay.
I.
I I have place to park my RV.
Right.
But there's not room to put the slide out, so when I'm trying to put things away, I'll pull it in front of my house.
Right.
Pull it out, put it in, you know.
Exactly.
As I go in and out, yeah.
The other thing too, I'd like to see in the ordinance on campers, the units that go in the back of pickups, they're not allowed on our streets. No ifs, ands, or buts.
Just the camper itself.
To be dropped.
Yes.
Offloaded from the truck.
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are, those legs are, it's very, very dangerous. If a kid bumps into it, whatever's playing under it, yeah, I I think if we're if we're gonna go and change the make rules and everything, I think establishing that from the get-go is you can't leave a trailer on its four legs on the street, even even if they put it down on the ground, they sometimes they have those little pads that can, no. That that they need to be in their truck beds and on someone else's property if they need to dismount. Yeah, and and let's make sure that that's not covered somewhere else. I think that might be covered under obstruction of right-of-way.
Um, okay.
But yeah, we can double check that.
I wanna double check because I I think there may be other regulations that that already apply to that, but we wanna make sure on.
Right. One thing I'd like to see with this, because I think as council, we have a pretty good grasp on the community, is I'd like to turn this from complaint driven to you being able to enforce. Um, because I think a lot of people, they may see what's going on and they could be afraid of retaliation, even though this is as confidential. If they do make a report to you, I know that. But I I see a lot of people just, they don't wanna deal with the drama and they just put up with it. And I'd like to kinda change it into where if you're driving through a neighborhood and you we know the telltale signs of a trailer or something that's been sitting on the street for longer than seventy-two hours, you know, you got all the leaves blown up against the tires and stuff like that, or moss is growing under it and everywhere else there's none. You know, I'd I'd like to see it changed into something that you could enforce that is not waiting for the complaint to be brought in by the by the voters.
Are we currently on a report basis only where somebody has to file with you or if you see something like that, aren't you able to do something now?
When there's, when there's vehicles that are very obviously dilapidated and abandoned, that I just can't drive by without. But it wouldn't just be if there's leaves blown up against the tires or something.
No.
Yeah, if there's a trailer with the tire off and it's tilted over and the window's broken, those are ones that I obvious ones I will address, but for the most part there, it's complaint-driven.
Right.
To start monitoring an average-looking trailer on any given street.
That's true.
Well, but but you still have the authority if you happen to drive by the same place over and over and notice those trailers there, you still have the authority to do something, right?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Seventy-two hours? If with the seventy-two hour rule, it's not, still wouldn't be a complaint-driven?
Sorry?
It wouldn't, I thought it the seventy-two hour rule, that's complaint-driven only.
Yeah, cuz he he wouldn't start monitoring, uh, like you said, a normal-looking trailer. If it's it's very obviously dilapidated and it's basically garbage on the side of the road, he's gonna address it. But if it's if it's in, you know, what we might call a normal-looking trailer parked on the side of the road, he typically wouldn't even pay mind to that unless someone had complained about it.
But he but he still has the right.
Legally, I do have the authority, yes.
Okay, that's.
But it's not in his job description.
Right.
No, yeah.
That's why I'd I'd like to put language in that this is something that doesn't have to be complaint-driven. It can be both. Because, I mean, there's a trailer that I've brought up tonight that Kyle knows the exact trailer and I'm sure it's still parked out there unless he's camping. And it's just, there there's a lot of habitual, but I also believe there needs, it's not something that once we do pass whatever the new rules are, it's not, we of course don't need to come on strong. We need to have an education process, you know, as we see the trailers out there for the first month or two, put some flyers on doorsteps saying, hey, this is going into play, just prepare you, you know, it's time to make some changes in your habits.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, go ahead.
How does this play into a homeless trailer? Because now you fall under different rules of evacuating somebody that's living in a trailer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so if somebody was living in a trailer, technically overnight, they would be breaking our unlawful camping rules because they're living in it and camping in it. If they're doing that, their option is to go to the designated camping parking spaces that are on Ross Street near the police department. Um, so if you're living in it, you fall under that unlawful camping. If it's just a recreational vehicle that you use that no one's living in, it falls under this parking.
And then as a third leg of that, um, there's also the ten-day, temp- or uh up to, I think it's
Thirty.
Up to thirty-day temporary permit, like, hey, I'm coming into town to visit, you know, my friends.
Or construction.
Yeah, or construction or something like that, but they come and get a permit and so they're monitored that way and we're, they're on the clock.
So how how much is a permit, do you know?
Those ones I think are fifty bucks.
Oh, okay.
I I I could look.
I know in our.
Thirty thirty days is a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, okay. I know in in our particular neighborhood, we have a Facebook group and a lot of times people have their relatives and they'll post on there, trailer's gonna be parked out front for X amount of days, please don't call us in. You know, and most of us don't really care, but.
And to some degree.
They're letting us all know.
And to some degree, I think that's why um things have been complaint-driven, is that it's kinda like if 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 everyone in the neighborhood doesn't mind, but I also see that there's potentially safety issues for, you know, that are from the outside looking in too, so. I think that's actually a big part of why this has been complaint-driven historically or, you know, up to now.
Don't we have streets though in the city that require no parking because the fire engines can't go down the street with cars parked there?
Not for that reason necessarily, um, but yeah, if there if there's not enough width. Uh, yes, is sure, if if the street's not wide enough to 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 accommodate vehicle parking and um passing vehicles, then then, yeah, we would.
Because I know like in Tolliver Court, one of the rules that they made was because they allowed that subdivision, they condensed building and they had to make the streets narrower that you couldn't park on the streets, but people still park on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tolliver Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That whole street's supposed to be no parking.
Yeah, it's a one one lane.
Okay, so that that's good to know too. I mean, some of this stuff, you guys have historical knowledge that we don't, that's really helpful and if
We all kinda know it, so.
Things didn't get done, then we can get them done.
Yeah.
Um, and things like signage on that street, so it's one of the big things is that we like to make sure we have signage, not in this scenario so much, but, you know, just for general no parking because it feels a little unfair to someone if they park on a street that doesn't say anything and then they end up getting a ticket, but. Um, so yeah, it sounds like we need to.
You may.
It doesn't have any, it doesn't have any no parking signs.
I don't have a no pad. Um, I I had another question for you guys that I wanted to follow up on to on the seventy-two hour rule. If I'm hearing correctly, it seems like everyone's kinda leaning towards, hey, a raw seventy-two hour rule without the ten-day weirdness of ten days a year and that's completely unenforceable and, you know, kind of a waste of ink. Um. Would seventy-two hours mean? You know, if if they're parked in front of, let's just say I'm parked in front of my house for twenty-four hours and then I pull it down fifty feet in front of my neighbor's house.
Yeah.
Am I, am I, am I starting over on a new clock?
I think you are.
I don't think you should be.
I I didn't say this.
Yeah, I know.
I think we need to find some language that keeps that from happening.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know the correct language.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think that it's it. And I'm I'm gonna disagree with the point. If we're in Oregon City and I park in front of one meter and I do it, I do my time and I go to the very next meter, I get in trouble. They they have rules about moving your car so many feet. And it's.
Yeah, they do.
When it comes to the meters, and I don't remember exactly how it works, but I know you can't just slightly move and call it good. Um, they they say you gotta like go to another block or.
Even though you're paying for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
When you go to the courthouse.
That's usually for people who are going to Oregon City, like to go to court dates or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz they'll come by and chalk your tire.
Yeah.
And if they see that chalk, just it's slightly moved just a little bit, you get a ticket, so.
Yep.
I think we need to find some language that says if you put it, move it just a few feet, you're gonna be out of, you're gonna be out of compliance.
We we do need to find language to keep that from happening.
Mm-hmm.
The one thing that we have to keep in mind is like with Oregon City in downtown, like by the courthouse, um, which is now not operating, it's up on top, um. They uh, they have parking enforcement people.
Right.
Right.
They have people that are walking around with those chalk poles and doing stuff. We're probably not gonna be doing.
Right.
So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, and I didn't think we were gonna do park necessarily meter maids, but, you know, I I don't wanna see Kyle's time wasted by somebody who moves it five feet.
Yeah.
And sorry, my clock started over and Kyle just go, uh, it's easier to adopt the language now that the issue's in front of us.
Our our towing notices that get put on vehicle windows, they do say any attempt to circumvent this order by repositioning the vehicle a few feet away will not. So I have stickered vehicles before. Because they're living in it and camping in it, if they're doing that, their option is to go to the designated camping parking spaces that are on Ross Street near the police department. So if you're living in it, you fall under that unlawful camping, if it's just a recreational vehicle that you use, that no one's living in, it falls under this parking.
And then as a third. Leg of that, um, there's also the ten day, temp- or uh up to, I think it's.
Thirty.
Up to thirty day temporary permit, like, hey, I'm coming into town to visit, you know, my friends.
Or construction.
Yeah, or construction or something like that, but they come and get a permit, and so they're monitored that way and we're, they're on the clock.
So how how much is a permit, do you know?
Those ones I think are. Fifty bucks. I I I could look.
Thir- thirty days is a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, okay. I know in in our particular neighborhood, we have a Facebook group and a lot of times. People have their relatives and they'll post on there, trailer's gonna be parked out front for X amount of days, please don't call us in. You know, and most of us don't really care, but.
And to some degree. And to some degree, I think that's why um things have been complaint driven, is that it's kinda like if 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 everyone in the neighborhood doesn't mind. But I also see that there's potentially safety issues for, you know, that are from the outside looking in too, so. I think that's actually a big part of why this has been complaint driven historically, or you know, up to now.
Don't we have streets, though, in the city that require no parking because the fire engines can't go down the street with cars parked there?
Not for that reason necessarily, um, but y- yeah, if there if there's not enough width. Eh yes, is sure, if if the street's not wide enough to 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 accommodate vehicle parking and um. Passing vehicles, then then, yeah, we would.
Cuz I know like in Tolliver Court, one of the rules that they made was because they allowed that subdivision, they condensed building. And they had to make the streets narrow, that you couldn't park on the streets, but people still park on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tolliver Drive.
Yeah. That whole street's supposed to be no parking.
Yeah, it's a one one lane.
Okay, so that that's good to know too, I mean, some of this stuff, you guys have historical knowledge that we don't, that's really helpful, and if.
We all kinda know it.
Things didn't get done, then we can get them done. Things like signage on that street, so it's one of the big things is that we like to make sure we have signage, not in this scenario so much, but you know, just for general no parking. Cuz it feels a little unfair to someone if they park on a street that doesn't say anything and then they end up getting a ticket, but. So yeah, it sounds like we need to. Um, I I had another question for you guys that I wanted to follow up on to on the seventy-two hour rule. If I'm hearing correctly, it seems like everyone's kinda leaning towards, hey, a raw seventy-two hour rule without the ten day weirdness of ten days a year and. That's completely unenforceable and, yeah, kind of a waste of ink. Would seventy-two hours mean? You know, if if they're parked in front of, let's just say, I'm parked in front of my house for twenty-four hours, and then I pull it down. Fifty feet in front of my neighbor's house.
Yeah.
Am I am I am I starting over on a new clock?
I think you are.
I don't think you should be.
I I didn't say this.
Yeah.
I think we need to find some language that keeps that from happening. I don't know the correct language. But I don't think that, it's it. And I'm I'm gonna disagree with the point. If we're in Oregon City and I park in front of one meter and I do it, I do my time, and I go to the very next meter. I get in trouble, they they have rules about moving your car so many feet. And it's.
Yeah, they do.
When it comes to the meters, and I don't remember exactly how it works, but I know you can't just slightly move and call it good. They they say, you gotta like go to another block or.
Even though you're paying for it. Yeah.
That's usually for people who are going to Oregon City, like to go to court dates or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz they'll come by and chalk your tire, and if they see that chalk, just. It's slightly moved just a little bit, you get a ticket, so. I think we need to find some language that says if you put it, move it just a few feet, you're gonna be out of, you're gonna be out of compliance.
We we do need to find language to keep that from happening. One thing that we have to keep in mind is, like with Oregon City in downtown, like by the courthouse. Which is now not operating, it's up on top. They uh, they have parking enforcement people. They have people that are walking around with those chalk poles and doing stuff. We're probably not gonna be doing.
Right.
So, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, and I didn't think we were gonna do park necessarily meter maids, but you know. I I don't wanna see Kyle's time wasted by somebody who moves it five feet.
Yeah.
And sorry, my clock started over and Kyle just go, eh, it's easier to adopt the language now that the issue's in front of us.
Our our towing notices that get put on vehicle windows, they do say, any attempt to circumvent this order by repositioning the vehicle. A few feet away will not, so I have stickered vehicles before, showed back up and they're moved and I tow it anyway, because it's still there. It's sure if they move it four feet, it's not. It says right on the notice, you can't do that.
And and I think we had, um, we had some language like that, we've had, we have some language like that in our code already that 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 specifies a distance, I just wanted to make sure. That I was hearing you guys correctly, that that would be something that you desire, so I think we have a good idea of how to make that happen, but.
Shouldn't they also be, I I think they should only be able to be parked in front of your own house.
That was my next question, lead me to it.
Then, but then you have those houses that are on the corner, so at what point is it in front of your house?
We could do a proximity to your house, because like if you pull up and your neighbors already parked there and you've got a fifty foot, you know, thirty foot trailer and a fifteen foot rig. You got forty-five feet you need, and you gotta park around the corner a half a block away. Eh cuz that's what you've got, y- you know, it just seems like, okay, you're doing your best, I mean, I'm sure they don't wanna park there and drag their cooler over there to load it and stuff too.
We have a, we have one that they face one street, but the side of their house is on this street, and they always park their RV over there, which. It isn't a problem, in fact, it's better where it's at, cuz that way it doesn't block the stop sign, but um, you know, you you do have those situations, so.
And 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 it's a great, it's it's really a great segue, cuz what I was gonna ask is is the example where. We get someone that parks, you know, r- right out here in front of Long Park on Mallah Avenue, do they now have seventy-two hours to move that vehicle? We need to make sure we consider that, even though our downtown parking has its own standards, if we if we aren't careful to. Write the ordinance in a way that honors those standards elsewhere, and and, I mean, you guys could even go as far as. Eh one of the good examples uh that that Council Gilmer brought up was Tolliver Drive, which I wasn't aware of, that they're not, you're not supposed to be parking vehicles on the street at all there. So you may have some carve-outs that are certain streets that are that we name in the ordinance, that you just can't park on them. The RV at all, because the street's not set up for it.
And the other thing we might consider is those thirty day permits. Before one's issued, we go out and take, city staff goes out and takes a look at the area the trailer's gonna be parked in. Because it doesn't fall into that, or hey, maybe somebody's got a permit directly across the street. And they're putting it here, and now you bottlenecked it down to one lane going through.
So we do, we conduct a full review of those, that's what the money goes to pay for, is that we're looking at all that stuff.
We had a situation a few weekends ago in um, I think it's Hauser Estates, so. The road kinda, it kinda goes around a corner and goes out onto Tolliver Drive. So this corner here, the the house on the corner, which their front faces a different street, so it's the side of their house, they have an RV. Which a lot of times they park it there, okay, that eh you know, it's a little crowded, but we can do it, cuz there's another guy who parks his car across. The other day, for several days, there was another RV there, and they were both at the same house, and that was. That was, I should've called and complained, but it, you know, to me, it wasn't.
Maybe some language that within that seventy-two hours, or whatever the hours is, only one trailer.
Per house.
Per house. You know, while we're at the language and trying to get it perfected, you know, just, you're only, in that seventy-two hours, you're only allowed one trailer, RV. Whatever the verbiage is, to be at that residence.
Um, so yeah, I think we can, we can definitely get get all of that done, I just wanna make sure, so, we're talking about, okay, um. We we'd like to tie this to 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 a residence, um, but maybe give a little bit of leeway. Eh you know, as far as how many feet from that residence still qualifies, since you may not be able to get your parking spot. And then.
Can't block anybody's dri- own other driveway.
Yeah, there should probably be some distance from intersection language too, with a rig that size.
Stop signs.
Well, see, that's this is what this problem was there.
Yeah.
That's already included.
And then the other guy's driveway.
We already have that language.
Perfect.
Council Gilmer.
How do you establish the seventy-two hours?
I typically, I make a chalk mark on the road near the tire, and I note the position of the air valve on the tire. To make sure it lines up with the chalk line in the same spot seventy-two hours later, ensure it didn't roll or move. Because I've heard that putting a mark on a vehicle is an unlawful search, so I like to avoid that.
So would we.
The 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 other thing too is is it's it's really an evidentiary question, and there are other ways to gain that evidence. Um, witness testimony, if you have multiple witnesses saying, we live here, we've watched it, it's been there for three days. They'd have to come get on the stand and say that at the court hearing if there was one. Video, if someone has a Ring camera, they can provide it to us, we can use that too. Um, so it's just kind of an evidence question, it is hard, it is hard to get the evidence for these, especially like the living in RV one, that one's really hard, cuz you're like. How do you, you know, how do you prove it, it's you gotta almost catch them going in and out, or. But what we've, we've been successful in kinda having the police support us, and hey, we drive by and see if there's lights on there, it looks like someone's in there, you know, at at this evening. So we can kinda get an idea, so we've we've found some workarounds, but.
And Kyle, one of the seventy-two hour notices, you're, well, I didn't hear you say it, but you're probably taking a picture too, that's time stamped.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you, I didn't think you'd said that, so I.
Yeah, I'll I'll even pho- I'll even photograph that, the chalk mark on the tire, so it's like, the photo's time stamped, here's the chalk mark, there's the valve. I come back seventy-two hours later, there's another photo chalk mark valve, it's like you can't argue that that didn't move.
Right.
And you may wanna make it like on a per month basis or something like that, cuz all I'm thinking is someone sits there for seventy-two hours. They take the RV, they take it to their friend Chuck's house in Woodburn for a day, they bring it back, park it there for seventy-two hours. I mean, yeah, it'd be a lot of work, but it can happen.
Yeah, it can.
My my only issue with that is, if somebody that is actively camping in the summer. You know, and say they plan. Two week long trips, you know, you're gonna have seventy-two hours to load it, seventy-two hours to unload it, and then you're gonna be doing it later that month. You know, it's like, we're, I think we're getting into the weeds with that part, I I. This would be a great, I think what we're looking at's a great start, and if we see issues then down the road. You know, if, in fact, whatever we end up doing, I'd like to get some reports on how it's working, and if you have issues or more suggestions. Please bring it back also, because this, to me, this is gonna be something living and breathing for a bit. Until we get all the kinks worked out, and trying to write everything out of the, at right out of the gate's gonna be virtually impossible.
And and my suggestion to you guys, and this is just food for thought, for, you know, when you do make a decision on this ultimately, um. Is that this ordinance might, it might be wise to make this a sixty day effect or a forty-five effect. Um, so that gives us forty-five days to be putting stuff out in the newsletter, getting stuff out on Facebook, getting the word out to people. So that, you know, we can spread it as broadly as possible that, hey, you you you're gonna have to do something about this, and then giving them some time to find alternative means. Cuz I know a lot of these folks are probably parking it there, and that's their stor- that, you know, they consider that their storage space. Um, even though they're not, already not supposed to do that, but um, that's probably how they've been operating. So they'll probably need a little bit of time to find, where am I gonna park this thing?
I think a ninety day education. If you would get them through the summer this year, and start looking for places to put them during the winter.
Yeah, I think making your ordinance effective however many days out, do you think that that um educational period should be when you guys vote on it? Will give us the time and 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 get us going on, saying, hey, this is adopted, but it's not effective for ninety days, so. You know, you're on notice.
I know, I know our neighborhood, I think, is pretty good. Yeah, we don't think we have, most of us, most of us have room to park RVs up in our house thing. And Big Meadow, I know, has HOAs about having their RVs, but I noticed that doesn't get applied.
Well, people get fined, they don't pay it, and it just gets a lien on their sit- when they sell their house, so it's it's really. Council Childers, you were politely raising your hand.
I was just curious how big of a problem this is, what's the level of complaints that we have? Experience.
In relation to all of my complaints?
Yeah, I guess, that'd be a fair.
Parking in general probably eats up twenty to twenty-five percent of the complaints, give or take, I'd I'd probably have to look at the numbers to get it more accurate. And then there'd be a smaller percentage of that that are RV specific, um, but yeah, twenty-five.
It's significant.
Thirty percent parking complaints and then.
One of the reasons.
Twenty, if twenty-five percent of all the complaints he gets is related to parking, that's what what I.
Yeah, parking is a significant issue.
It would be nice to know to see the actual numbers of actual RV complaints.
Yeah, I can, I can actually, I can get all those numbers in.
The the other thing not to forget is, this issue was one of your goals. That you talked about at your goal setting session, so that's one of the reasons why.
You weren't there, you didn't know.
That's that's why this is a project for.
One of the reasons why I kinda brought it up was, there was a weekend last December that I drove through Big Meadow. And I drove around taking pictures of all the trailers parked in Big Meadow, and like, some people said, they were on corners. You can't see, some of them, they had their tip outs out in the road, and they literally took cones and stuck them out there, so people wouldn't hit. Obviously, people are staying in that, and I could only imagine Christmas time, people drinking, that's gonna be dangerous. Um, and so I drove through all of Big Meadow, and I turned all those pictures into Dan, and it also had an effect of. I'm sorry, Kyle, I know you're working Saturdays every so often now, because we actually had full eighty foot freight semi trucks. Parking in Big Meadow, loaded, well, he would show up Friday night after five o'clock, knowing that city staff's gone. And I would turn the pictures into city staff, and so unfortunately, Kyle got the short end of a stick and started working some Saturdays. To go catch some of these weekend issues that are happening. So, I mean, to me, when that is happening, that's proving a point that they're trying to outsmart the city. They know they shouldn't be, and especially a semi, we all know Troy's Diesel will park anybody's semi in their parking lot, everybody parks there. There's lots of locations in the city for semis to go, and so it's it, you know, the the apartments, we've had. Shoot, how many landscape trucks up on Meadow, um, and then we also had the car hauling company. Hotshot trailers, and they park all their big long trailers right along Meadow. Meadow Drive, sorry, and it was just, it, there was days, like when we were doing the roundabout. And the detour was down Meadow Drive, it was just a debacle trying to get through there during rush hour, because. You, two cars could not drive through that street at one time, and so it just, it got, it it became a pain, and I just. I was raised with the theory that if it looks like a clown and dresses like a clown, it's probably a clown.
Sorry.
Hi. I didn't, I didn't make the announcement to mute your phone, you're safe. Anyway, and it just, to me, if people are coming to town, they're visiting during the holidays, and all they see is trailers everywhere. And semi trucks parked everywhere, it just, it makes our ci- doesn't make our city look very good.
So I will add, the um, large commercial vehicles can only be parked on residential streets for three hours, according to our code, so those ones. They can't be there for more than three hours, and then I was also going to mention, um, the question about the numbers. In the quarterly council reports, parking complaints is actually a separate location in my code number, so. We could be, we could just look at the council reports, and that'll show us exactly how much of that graph parking complaints is taken up.
I think they want specific to RV or trailer.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So you you just mentioned uh, commercial vehicles, I'm assuming you're talking about semi trucks and things like that?
Yeah.
What about like some of these big vans that are commercial, eh you know, is there, they're work trucks? Yeah, kind of, a li- some a little smaller than that, but bigger than a car van.
I'd have to look at the ORS definition.
That are parked on the street at night, I mean, they they obviously, they live there, they've come home.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the definition for what would qualify as a large commercial vehicle. Vans, I think not so much, but once you get into box truck, things like that, semis.
So, to be clear, when you say commercial, if it's parked in. For example, I drive a dump truck, I park it in my driveway, I have like an RV pad where I live, it's on my property, that's okay though, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah, just to follow up, we're still seeing commercial rigs, such as fully loaded log trucks parked on the side streets in Big Meadow and. Dump trucks there, usually it's over the weekend too, when we see the loaded log trucks, because they missed getting in to get offloaded, and so they wait till Monday. But.
Wow, you should've been here years ago, they were everywhere.
Well, and it's also a preservation, you know, we're trying to preserve the asphalt we have, and them sitting on the road is not helping. The resident, there's a difference in the asphalt that's out here on Main Street than there is over here in Big Meadow. Or in front of our houses, you know, and well, not my house, I live on Main Street, but nonetheless, and them sitting out there fully loaded. Uh, first off, it's hard on the truck overnight, but it's it's even harder on the asphalt, and it's gonna take life away from a product that we're trying to conserve in our city. So.
Oh, I did have one more.
Yes, sir.
Don't mind, um, the bump out issue you brought up, I thought was a really good one. I would recommend that the ordinance require that the bump outs not be out while they're parked on the city right of way, at all. You you kind of go from being a vehicle or something that is seen on the side of the road. To something different when you put the bump outs out, like you can't tow it with the bump outs out, it's it's no longer, it's no longer a, a, you know. A mobile conveyance of any sort, it's it's become more of a house at that point, and those bump outs, like you said. There's no way that they're not in the traffic lane if they're going out towards the road, cuz.
Or the sidewalk.
Or in the sidewalk, if they're going the other way, both of those things shouldn't be happening, I mean, you you, it's a vehicle hazard in the road. And it's a, it's it's a hazard for anyone going down the sidewalk, and really, it's it's more about your folks who who have ambulation issues and those sorts of things. That really, really need the sidewalk to get from A to B when they're walking. You know, for you and I, we can duck it, go around it, whatever, but you know, the folks that can't go off the sidewalk, what are what are they to do at that point? You know, I coned it off, so, you know, good luck getting down the sidewalk, crippled person, you know, I I just doesn't seem right. I think it's also, I think it's also pretty, I think it's also illegal under other codes, but I think putting it in here would not hurt. To put people on notice specifically, I mean, I I'm pretty sure that we have that. Um, things about blocking the sidewalk, blocking the right of way in our code, and certainly in the ORS's as well, um. But putting it into this ordinance, I think would be helpful to put, to provide notice to people, like, don't be opening up your your bump outs.
Can we do, eh, eh, what does council think about a bit of a compromise on that, do does yours have pushouts on it?
They do, but when I'm loading it, I'll I'll bring my stuff in, then I'll bump it out, I don't even put it out all the way, and I'll only put one side out. And put my stuff away, and then I pull it right back in, so I do not leave them out.
How how far would be a minimum that you would need, cuz I know some of those.
I don't put it all out all the way, uh, it depends on, so like mine are the the cupboards are right up against the bed. So I go out just to where I can get the cupboard door open, so it's about like that.
So, cuz and the reason why I bring that up is because when some of those are in, until it goes out, you don't have access to load stuff into that trailer. And so what I'm thinking is some sort of compromise within a foot, two foot, you know.
How about they just can't be left out?
While you're actively loading, maybe?
Yeah, they can be out while you're actively loading, but if if you need a timeframe, Kyle, you know, let's think of a timeframe, but. I just know, some of those, you have to have them out to load, and I don't, I don't.
Well, and then, are you able to close them after you load?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, so if you're, say, going to the back bedroom, and you go in the door, well, you have this pushout right here. You can't get to that back bedroom to put your stuff unless you push it out enough to walk through the path.
Gotcha.
So, some sort of, a bit of a compromise on so much feet or inches, whatever.
Well, you can't get back there to sleep either, so people would not be sleeping in it, you can't, you know. And one thing, I I just keep, the the finer, the more finely tuned we try to make these things. The more enforcement it's gonna take, it won't do us any good to write these rules down if we can't enforce them. And in order to enforce them, we have staff to do, we have to have staff to do it, so I would just. Conscious us all to to keep that in mind, as we talk about the things that we wanna have in here.
Right. We're we're we're, how are you with everything we've brought up as far as the enforcement level, since it's eh, ground level, it's you? Since it's, it, ground level, it's you.
If we did the, I mean, everything seems fine to me. Um, the bump-outs, if we did a time limit, again, that's gonna create a situation where I'm not able to close out one situation and go on to the next. I would have to come back to deal with that situation again, that same day. Um.
And, and maybe-
It's doable. Um, that's all I was gonna say.
I was just gonna say, maybe we just depend on the other sections of the code for that and, you know, exercise appropriate discretion. And, you know, obviously if someone's got their bump-out out for twenty minutes while they're loading their stuff up, it's gonna be closed by the time Kyle gets there anyways. Um, you know, and I think we can depend on, uh, uh, but I want him to take a look at that, um, you know, obstructing a sidewalk or obstructing a right-of-way. I think those things might apply, cause, you know, and, and it wouldn't apply to every bump-out, right? It's, it's gonna be, hey, are you sticking that thing out all the way into the lane? And at that point, it's like, well, you just, you obviously can't do that.
Or having people sleep in it at night.
Well, see, and I think-
That's my biggest fears.
Yeah, but you, that's what some of the people are doing.
On the street.
They're coming to visit and they're using their trailer as an extra room, so they are sleeping in it.
And if we're, if we offer the permits that allows it, then we have to allow bump-outs to be open during that time.
Mm-hmm.
Sir?
Is there anything in our code, uh, that defines how wide a vehicle can be on our city streets?
I believe there is. Um, I would have to look at that to get a, to get a solid answer.
So I'm, I'm thinking along the lines of, you know, when those pop-outs are extended, do we just go past that, um, that law, that rule?
Yeah.
So.
Kyle, do you have anything else you need to go through with this packet? We're running short on time.
No, I was-
I'm sure you can get all the time you need.
I was gonna mention it, my presentation's done. Oh, whoops.
Okay.
Um, it did get brought up to maybe make it a monthly. Um, and just what came to my mind is you're sort of in the same situation as the ten days per calendar year because, you know, you gotta track each house, what, how much time they use per month as well. So. Oh, look at that, here's the ordinance we're working on. Oh, no, that's not, never mind. That's all I have.
Okay. Any final questions, final thoughts? All right. I will adjourn this meeting at six forty-seven. We'll be back at seven o'clock.
Our president, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Audience members and council, we request that you silence your cellphones and not conduct side conversations during the meeting. Thank you. Uh, we'll go to roll call, starting with Councilor Bartholomew.
Agency member Bartholomew present?
Counselor.
Counsel, okay, Councilor Bartholomew present?
Later, we'll go to-
Okay, sorry about that.
Uh, Council President Vermillion present?
Mayor Kaiser present.
Council Childress present.
Council Shankle present.
Council Gomer present.
Assistant City Manager Matt Corthell present.
Senior Planner Dan Zinder present.
Violet Brown, Three J Consulting present.
Dan Huff, City Manager present.
City Recorder Christie Teats present.
Cindy Schron, Finance Director present.
Thank you. Uh, does staff or council have any changes to the agenda tonight? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of a work session, meeting minutes, July tenth, twenty twenty-four?
I make a motion, we-
Hold on one sec.
Oh, sorry.
Question for Christie on this, what? How come we have these from twenty twenty-four on here?
So as part of your staff report, I explained that the record, the city recorder's duties for the upcoming audit is that any outstanding meeting minutes be completed and accounted for by the end of the fiscal year. After reviewing and auditing meeting minutes, I noticed that the minutes provided on this council agenda were, were missing.
So would you, do you want me to go through and read each one of these for the record, for the auditing?
It's not necessary. It's posted on, on our agenda.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Take it away, ma'am.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? All right, Christie, will you call the roll?
Certainly. Councilor Gilmer.
Aye.
Councilor Shankle.
Aye.
Councilor Childress.
Aye.
Council President Vermillion.
Aye.
Councilor Bartholomew.
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Thank you. Vote passes six zero.
All right, up next will be public comment. Citizens are allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, citizens shall complete a comment form and deliver it to the city recorder. The city council does not generally engage in dialogue with those making comments, but may refer the issue to the city manager. Complaints should first be addressed at the department level prior to addressing the city council. Christie, do we have any public comment tonight?
We do, Mayor. I'm, it's provided with, at, for each of you at the council dais. Mr. DeMayo Etigurk is here and he has some comments that he would like to make, please.
Okay, come on up, sir. State, state your name and city you reside in, please.
My name is Corin DeMayo Etigurk and I live just south of, I'm just right outside of the limits.
Perfect, go ahead.
Awesome, yeah, thank you, uh, council and mayor for your time. And thank you again, um, to Dan and everyone who I've engaged with, um, at the city who have continued to have a back and forth on this topic with me. Um, but I'm here to talk about the urban growth boundary again. So my name is Corin DeMayo. Um, I spoke at the May City Council meeting where I shared my initial concerns regarding the incompatibility of the proposed UGB expansion and Oregon's Goal fourteen factors and guidelines. Over the last few weeks, I rereviewed the housing needs analysis, capacity documents, and population forecasts. And I noted a significant difference between the forecasted population for Malala from the twenty twenty estimate being used for planning and the updated twenty twenty-four forecast. While this disparity is assumed to be known by both the city and D L C D, warrants further discussion here and now, particularly given recent developments in the planning process. The twenty twenty population forecast used for the UGB planning projects Malala's twenty forty-two population at fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty, a net increase of five thousand four hundred and thirty-two residents. a net increase of five thousand four hundred and thirty-two residents. However, the updated twenty twenty-four forecast places the twenty forty-two estimate at thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight, a net increase of two thousand nine hundred and thirty residents. This represents a nearly fifty percent decrease in projected population, a potentially monumental disparity given the millions of dollars in infrastructure and service improvements a UGB expansion could require. To illustrate the point of how dramatic the difference is, we can use the projections in the housing needs analysis and compare the two forecasts using the standard measure of two point eight people per housing unit needed. The original population projection suggested a need for approximately one thousand nine hundred and ninety-six housing units. After accounting for rezoning and other efficiency measures within the current UGB, which would accommodate one thousand sixty-eight units, a deficit of nine hundred and twenty-eight units was projected. Using the updated twenty twenty-four forecast, however, the housing need drops to approximately one thousand sixty-four units. With the same infill and efficiencies applied to this estimate, the result is now a surplus of four units, not a deficit. Even extending the horizon to twenty forty-five and using the latest Oregon DAS estimates for a maximum housing need of one thousand one hundred and fifty-two units, this yields a need for only eighty-four new units, not nine hundred and twenty-eight, acknowledging this is a slight oversimplification due to safe harbor guidelines, housing composition requirements, and other planning rules. To understand the reason for this shift, I visited Portland State University last week with another community member and met directly with the Population Research Center staff to discuss the analysis. I learned that the basis for the wild variation in the forecast was largely related to COVID-influenced statistical errors and data quality issues. COVID was a statistical shock event which introduced a litany of anomalies and data challenges, altering how components of change, that is births, deaths, and migration, were considered in the forecast. The pandemic also disrupted data collection processes and created integrity issues with some sources provided by the U.S. Census Bureau. Additionally, the sequential completion of apartment complexes caused a spike in the notional population, which disproportionately impacted Malala's forecast due to its relative size. This confluence of data issues and statistical irregularities resulted in a deeply misrepresented population forecast which drastically overestimated the growth potential for Malala within the twenty-year time horizon. This means that Malala is currently planning for a major UGB expansion based on a quote-unquote "need", which is largely the byproduct of statistical anomaly and flawed source data, a need which the Portland State Population Research Center, Oregon Department of Administrative Services, and DLCD all acknowledge does not currently exist. While DLCD rules allow cities to lock in a forecast during planning, they also permit the adoption of updated data at their discretion. Deferring to a flawed dataset that varies by nearly fifty percent stretches the reasonableness of this accommodation and may undermine its legal basis. Legislative overrides and land swap options are very unlikely to pass any basic vetting, much less be considered for approval if the statistical basis for those claims are fundamentally flawed. If Malala intends to expand in alignment with state planning guidelines, the council and planning commission should consider adopting the updated population forecast and incorporate it into planning. This would allow Malala its surest footing for any administrative or legal recourse within the UGB process, greatly improve planning accuracy, ensure that current residents are not forced to subsidize development costs for nonexistent demand, and allow the city to refocus on creating sustainable economic development so that future residential expansions will be more appropriately aligned with Malala's history and character. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, my apologies. That polite comment should have been attested during the UGB presentation time. We won't be repeating it then.
No problem.
Thank you. When you are ready to present, we need you to screen share on the Zoom, please. And when we get there, you've got a moment, thank you.
All right, up next, a public hearing. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. This item requires a public hearing. I am opening this public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven at seven ten. The purpose of this hearing is to hear a staff report and listen to public testimony. Does any council member wish to acknowledge actual or potential conflicts of interest? All right, Finance Director Cindy Sharon, council is ready for your staff report.
Good evening, council. The Malala Budget Committee reviewed and acted on the proposed budget on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and has approved and recommended a balanced budget for the upcoming fiscal year of seventy-five million, five hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven, adopting the budget, making appropriations, and imposing and categorizing taxes for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
All right, thank you very much. Does council have any questions? All right, public comment for this item is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or opposition regarding our budget? All right, seeing there is none, I will close this hearing at seven twelve. Ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. And Cindy Sharon, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I'm not at this time.
All right, having held a public hearing for this resolution, we are ready to consider a motion for approval. Is there a motion to approve or amend resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, adopting the budget, making appropriations, and imposing a categorizing tax and categorizing taxes for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, adopting the budget, making appropriations, and imposing and categorizing taxes for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
I second that.
It's been moved by Council President Vermillion, seconded by Councilor Shankle. Is there any discussions or question? All right, Kristi, will you call the roll?
Councilor Bartholomew?
Aye.
Council President Vermillion?
Aye.
Councilor Childress?
Aye.
Councilor Shankle?
Aye.
Councilor Gilmer?
Aye.
Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Thank you, vote passes six zero.
Perfect. Up next, general business, urban growth boundary update. Mr. Zinder, we're ready for your staff report.
Good evening. Tonight's topic of urban growth boundary is our Goal fourteen analysis. Basically, it's the last step on our grant before we start looking at an urban growth boundary amendment. This looks at the location factors for the subareas discussed in the last meeting and I will, as it's all, everything I would say would be in Violet's presentation, I'll turn it over to Violet Brown of 3J Consulting to give the rest of this presentation.
Thank you so much, Dan, and I want to thank everybody for yet another opportunity to come out and talk about this project with you. And if Dan can help me figure out how to move slides. Ah, there we go, I gotta click. Awesome, so-
Zoom feature.
Yes, it looks like we are sharing the screen on the Zoom. So tonight, we'll go through a little bit of a reminder on the schedule and a little bit on the legal framework for the boundary expansion process, summary of some of the community engagement that we've done. We'll review the parcel prioritization, which I know is a big kind of piece of this that everyone's trying to sort of tackle and understand. And then I'll go through the statewide planning, Goal fourteen, location factors by subarea, focused on subareas one through seven, which are that exception land to the south that we've been talking about. And then we'll discuss next steps. So again, we've gone through, you've seen this slide many times. I tried to make it a little bit jazzy for this one and give you a little bold of where we are. But, so we'll present some analysis tonight. We presented the same analysis to Planning Commission, had a really good conversation about it last week. We'll present to you guys today. And then, as Dan mentioned, the next step is really to move forward with deciding sort of on a parcel level where exactly a new boundary would go and working with the community around that and then adopting a new boundary. Again, the work plan for this has that going through March of twenty twenty-six. It then gets adopted by the county. It's either approved or, I said denial, but I think it actually comes out in a like refusal to sign or something, something like that with DLCD. There is, as we discussed last time, I think, a potential for some legislative override. The city of Roseburg has done that recently, as has Monmouth. And I believe there's another city looking to do something similar. So that's definitely a possibility in terms of how to go about expanding the urban growth boundary and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that as a possibility. And I share you that slide again. So as we were just heard from the public comment, and as you guys know, this UGB process is based on the EOA and the HNA. And the HNA was adopted back in twenty twenty-three but actually competed, completed in twenty twenty-two based on the data available, I believe, early in twenty twenty-two. And as we go through that, it does show that we would need nine hundred and twenty-eight new units that would be across a hundred and eighty-two acres of residential land. Ninety, I think ninety-eight percent of that would be for R1 and about two percent would be remaining for R2. And again, I believe we talked about this last time, but that's based on the rezoning of significant land within the UGB being rezoned into R3. So that basically took care of the R3 need that was stated in the HNA through rezoning. So what would be left would be primarily R1. So, and then from the E and E, there is also a twenty-five percent adjustment for infrastructure, for roads. So when I do the housing capacity calculations of how many housing units, say a hundred-acre parcel, a hundred-acre subarea could produce, I obviously have to discount for the fact that there would be utility easements and roads that would have to go in and other infrastructure, so not every inch is going to produce, you know, be available for actually building homes. So we are allowed to account off twenty-five percent for infrastructure. So I've done that in trying to give you a very realistic expectation of how many homes could possibly be built. It also tracks exactly DLCD's math that I'm allowed to do. So on employment land, the EOA said that you needed a number of sites, you've seen this before. We're talking four sites each for the five-to-ten acre size and the ten-to-twenty acre size, those eight sites. There are plenty of candidates for that in the exception land and I'll go into that in a minute. The two sites that are over twenty acres, there are no sites of that size in the exception land to the south. And so we'll go over what next steps in terms of trying to find those lots for Malala's expansion. I will remind you, you're required to do, to meet your residential need, you're required to show that you can accommodate your residential growth. The employment growth is optional in terms of trying to meet those expectations set out in the EOA. But again, I think there's reasons why the city would want to try to accommodate that land. But again, that's from the EOA. So parcel prioritization, again, the first priority land, we talked about that, urban reserves, which Malala has none, exception lands, there's approximately five hundred and eighty acres on the southern edge of the existing urban growth boundary. And that's land that was rezoned from exclusive farm use into a residential use by the county because the uses existing on the parcels have made it, have removed it from being valuable for farming or being able to be used for farming, so it's being used for urban uses, in this case residential. So DLCD requires that when you try to expand your urban growth boundary, that's your land of first recourse. Second would be marginal lands, which you don't have. Resource lands that are not high-value farmland are third. There are some, I'll show you on the map, so I think I showed you last time. They're not close to the UGB, so they're not necessarily practical for expansion. And then the rest of the land around Malala is fourth priority, which is the high-value farmland, including prime and unique soils. And that's the county zoning map, so you can see the things that are zoned. EFU is all the mint green and then the kind of voided-out spaces are things that are zoned for residential. And so that would be your land of first resort here, now I've made them orange. The yellow is that third priority land that I mentioned that's not near the existing UGB. Mainly, it's not high-value farmland because it's by the creek and it's got slopes and it's got flooding and things like that that make it not great for farming. So again, the policy would have you use that land before taking prime soil, farming soil. So we did have a public meeting back in April, we gave a handout and we, the comment forms, I believe last time I was here, the survey was still open. We ended up getting forty-one responses on the survey. I have to say again, I've been very impressed with the community response. I think tonight being a perfect example of very thoughtful, eloquent responses from the community and for everybody that's been a part of this process, from Planning Commission to our PAC and our TAC, everybody's been very helpful. And so we, and again, for those of you who are here, we had, you know, over a hundred people show up for the public meeting. So the Goal fourteen factors, there are four of them. Location factors, again, it's a sort of a balancing test where you're comparing land, when you're comparing land, all of the same priority. You then apply this balancing test and the first one is if you, if you take in a subarea and you locate it here, is it an efficient accommodation of need? And by efficiency, they tend to look at the proximity to the existing UGB parcel size. If something is extremely parcelized, it's not usually efficient for development because, you know, maybe a parcel splits, you know, a small, maybe a one-acre parcel splits and there, and it becomes two homes. Maybe it doesn't. Five acres, maybe somebody ends up developing it. Whereas large tracts of land are much easier for, say, a subdivision or an economy of scale for someone to come in and develop. Most developers aren't looking to talk to ten or fifteen homeowners to try to put something, landowners to try to put something together. So we look at parcel size. And then buildable land, if you're bringing in a hundred acres and only fifty of it is buildable because of environmental constraints or utility easements or right-of-way's or others, or existing structures, then that's not going to be seen as an efficient use of UGB expansion. So that's location factor one. Factor two is orderly and economic, and you'll see as I go through these, a lot of them overlap. You know, an argument in one can be an argument in the other. So here we look at sewer water, transportation, and stormwater and basically it's the cost, is it orderly and is it economic to extend services? And so that's location factor two. Three is, I said this at Planning Commission, three is four factors in a trench coat. We've got economic, social, environmental, and energy. Basically, they kind of come together to say, how, how close are you to services? How close are you to the community, libraries, schools? You know, what, does it make sense to expand in this direction? For energy, they look at vehicle miles traveled, you know, what are we doing for our city if we expand out in this direction? Are we, you know, are we giving people good access to, you know, bus routes and close to the library and close to grocery shopping and, and schools? Or are we kind of extending out far away from what is really the heart of our city where people are going to want to kind of, kind of interact with their neighbors? Economic, again, we look at the cost of, of the land, we look at the cost of extending services, we look at parcel size again, development potential. So that's a little bit buildable land percentage but also development potential, right? Like, is there, and we don't necessarily mean individual landowners' thoughts and feelings about it because again, the way that that has been kind of shown to me in the policy is that, you know, land changes hands. Something, you know, it can change, we're talking twenty years of, of planning. So the person who owns it now and what they intend to do with it is not what we mean by development potential. But if you're looking for industrial and you have something that's near the highway that, you know, kind of has other characteristics that makes it sort of have a development potential for the type of use you're looking for, then that's the kind of thing that we would talk about here. And environmental, we want to make sure that we're being cognizant of slopes and flood plains and all of our Goal five resources when we're expanding. And again, so if you have two, this is a comparison, right? So if you have two possible expansions of equal priority in land prioritization and you're looking at them, if one of them has a lot of Goal five, say hypothetically, it's very close to wetlands, it's very close to city park, you might decide that that's not, you know, if you, if you're going one area and not, you only have to pick one area, you might pick the one that has fewer of those environmental consequences. So that's for location factor three. Four deals with consequences as well, this time with impact on farm and forest remaining outside of the UGB. So if we expand that way and we end up putting our residential or industrial use near active farming or forest, how compatible is that use? And I will say, I've worked in other jurisdictions in Oregon and sometimes when you have like, you know, say you have an organic produce farm, you know, those are very sensitive to trespassers and, and things like that on their land. So it can be very difficult and require a lot of kind of buffering. So we look at compatibility. So we look at compatibility. So that's something that we'll get into a little bit later. And I've added under each of these, some examples to just really sort of flesh out for you, for you guys, the kind of things that come up. So again, for the ag, we talk about trespassing litter, harmful pet waste, vandalism, but it's also like the delivery of, of, of equipment, the use of the road system and things like that, like how compatible is that farmland? So that's something to look at. So when I talk about compatibility as well, we'll look across the UGB into what's actually being used, what the uses are on the land that's within the UGB that would be bordering the expansion. So if you have a lot of land that is residential or is industrial, then obviously it would be most compatible with an expansion of that same type of use. This is a little, this map is a little bit outdated because I know there was some rezoning, so I included this one because that big yellow bit is the one that is most relevant to the expansion because it borders the exception lands that we're studying and it switches it from industrial to residential. So when you look at specifically, I think study areas six and seven border that land. And so I think that that would, in, in some ways, change what is most compatible for those sub areas. So again, these are the sub areas you've seen. They've had some minor tweaks, but they're generally the same. And again, I believe we spoke last time about that orange to the west as the airstrip. And, and so that we would, we would be excluding from our study area because it's being used as an active airstrip and not likely to develop into anything else. So what I'll do tonight is I'll go through each of the sub areas, kind of zoomed in and give you kind of a, a chance to look at some detailed maps that highlight a lot of the different location factors sort of all at once. So starting at the bottom right, and you see it's mostly yellow, green and blue, that map has got our uses. And so you can see where there's industrial across from sub area two and where there's residential and the green would be the remaining EFU land. So you can see that across the UGB border, actually for sub area two, it's mostly industrial that it borders on. Right above that, I've got a wetlands map. You can also see that in the large map in the center where I've placed the, the big blue wetlands. This map is a little bit different for those who looked at the, the PowerPoint, I believe that was in your packet and was also what I showed to Planning Commission and to our PAC and our TAC. We have had some very recent conversations with DLCD about the fact that Malala has some additional protections for wetlands in your code. And therefore we were actually allowed to constrain more of the land in terms of development because we want to be realistic that if something comes in, even though it's not delineated as a protected wetland now, mainly because it hasn't been inventoried yet because it's not in the UGB. But once it does become, if it did become part of the UGB and it did get inventoried, it's likely that those wetlands would then become, would be considered protected. So we've added them in a larger scale as constraints. Not to be confused with the brown sort of coffee colored, and maybe that means I need an extra, an extra coffee, but on that middle map on the side, that's your hydrox soils. It's, you'll, if you can see the, the small legend on there, those are additional types of soil that are often then, once the inventory happens deemed to be locally significant wetlands, they're not currently delineated as a wetland. So this, this parcel, this sub area has even more land that once it got inventoried, might actually turn out to be even a greater amount of wetlands. Up in the corner, you have road system, road classifications. So it shows here that you've got Malala Road, mainly you've got Malala Road and Malala Forest Road. And so we have here the classifications as a collector or an arterial. That will be relevant to us as we start to think about various uses on this and, and locations to highways and access to, to existing transportation and how many upgrades or extensions might need to happen if development occurred in this sub area. Also still show that there are four large lots that are over 10 acres. I will say also, it's been brought to my attention, I believe those are all owned by the same owner. So they could technically be combined to make an even larger lot over 20 acres. It's the only opportunity, I think, in the exception land to do that. However, it's covered in wetlands. So that, that's the thorn in the, in that one. So then I zoom in a little bit on just the sub area and I give you some numbers. So, and this will be in our ultimate report, which we're refining now. The gross acres, you've got 74 acres with those wetlands, only 27 of those acres are actually developable. And if all of those 27 acres were used for housing, you could get about 97 units out of that. Now, the industrial lots, as I meant, as I mentioned, there are four. If combined, there are about 54 buildable acres. Or they're 54 acres, sorry. And that shouldn't say buildable because I've been editing this. And two of them have access along Malala Forest Road. But as you can see, since they're the same owner, actually one of those lots doesn't have access anywhere. So we also, are they contiguous with the UGB? We talk about proximity to the UGB and whether, and that efficient, efficient expansion is stuff that's, that's contiguous. It is. We do have sewer existing along Malala Avenue, although our information is that it cannot accommodate any additional flow other than what it is currently serving. So that would require an, an upgrade, would also require a lift station over Bear Creek. So I do believe as we move forward, it'll be time to kind of put some numbers to that to say if we expanded here, what, 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 what does something like that cost, right? And, and so that'll be sort of the next stage. It does, in terms of compatible uses, again, I mentioned it's industrial inside the UGB, sort of residential to the south. On the east, it's, on the east, it's the park with additional wetlands. So in terms of development, I, I think it's sort of limited for sub area two. And I mentioned that with the goal five implications, that you have those additional hydrox soils that could be locally significant wetlands. That would limit development potential even further once a, a wetlands inventory was completed. If there aren't any questions, I'll move on to three. Sub area three kind of runs, I'm just kind of marching along the existing UGB. Here I show you parcel size for some of the larger parcels. Again, in the bottom right is the compatibility with nearby uses. I also had them go ahead and put on the base map, you'll see that there's actually structures on there as well. So you can kind of see the development pattern within that yellow residential area. So again, this one is bordering some industrial within the UGB and then everywhere else it's bordering on residential except for to the eastern edge where it borders directly with what is to remain EFU land. And you'll see from the constraints on this one that it gets sort of more constrained and parcelized the more you kind of travel east. There, you end up having more slopes and I believe some wetlands and, and kind of flooding areas that extend from, from the north edge. And in terms of road access, you have Malala Forest Road, you have continuation of Malala Avenue. There are some large parcels right there to the west of Malala Avenue and that are directly across the UGB from current industrial uses. And there's Matthias Road all the way to the east. I will say that does start to get pretty far away from, like we were talking about social in terms of the, the shopping and bus routes and schools and libraries and things like that as you start to move further east. That's kind of the, the southeast kind of bound, farthest away that we have in our study So I'll give you some numbers on that one. All of sub area three is 100 acres, about 89 of them, about 90 are developable. The housing capacity, if this entire thing was developed based on the state's math for housing capacity over the next 20 years, it could end up fitting 313 units. There, about six of those parcels are over 10 acres and, sorry, are over five acres within the, the sizes that you're looking for from your EOA. Those six acres are about 47, almost 48, sorry, six parcels are about 48 acres. So again, main access here is along South Malala Avenue and I have here Dresler Lane, is that correct for three? There's something called Dresler Lane. So again, we're trying to make sure as we do this, that I even kind of drove around last time as on my way out, I happened to stop at McDonald's. But on my way out and just make sure, you know, that some of these things, you get the data, you know, from, you download it from various sources and stuff. And we just want to make sure that all of this is rings true for the community and that we've ground truthed it in terms of the uses and the way that these neighborhoods are used and how accessible some of these roads are. For, from a data standpoint, we rely pretty heavily on road classifications. But again, we'll be working with the city and making sure that, that all of those are very, very clear. So again, you're very near the city park, particularly like I said, on that eastern edge. You're a little bit down below the wetlands that are part of, part of that park and, and rural residential and some EFU land. We did hear in our surveys that in heavy rains, that this gets flooded in various areas. And so it's not super surprising given the, the, the constraints that you can see there in blue. All right. Sub area four is right to the south of three. It's our most parcelized and it has the most existing structures and existing neighborhood. You can see that it, the entirety of it borders EFU to the south and residential in the exception land in sub area three to the north. It is, doesn't have significant wetlands on it as it stands now. And in terms of roads, you can see there that, you know, you're just sort of following down Malala Forest Road, which, I mean, sorry, Malala Avenue, which at this point I believe is called something else and I can't quite read it with my glasses there.
It's Will Hoyt.
Will Hoyt, yes. But again, it's Malala Avenue, that's, that's continuing out there. All right. So the numbers for that one, the whole area, the whole sub area takes up 130 gross acres, 129 of those are developable. Like I said, this one doesn't have significant constraints other than the fact that it's extremely parcelized. If we calculate out the housing capacity over the next 20 years, those acres could divide and, and, and develop into 337 new housing units. Again, 98% of that would be single family homes. And 11 parcels are on 70 acres that are of that size. But you can see what I mean, a lot of those 11 are just at five acres or 5.1. So they're in that, technically in that five to 10 acre size for industrial uses. But they're again, very parcelized and sort of small and clumped together on the eastern side in the farthest away from services. Again, water is nearly to, it says nearly to the city limits on South Matthias Road, but no sewer until Seventh Street. We could extend sewer along Matthias. The lines are currently eight inches and designed only for the subdivision that they serve. So they would require upgrades in order to serve additional homes in this area. And again, flooding was reported for this during heavy rains in our, in our survey from the public. Moving along to sub area five, I'll say this one, again, it borders a little pocket of industrial in that little square. That's part, currently part of the UGB, but the rest of it is residential or EFU land to the south. While some of the parcels in this one are larger, in some ways, I feel like we, we talk about larger parcels as being more efficient. There's not a lot of road access through here and a number of those parcels don't have access to any roads at all. And, and, and they use easements through other people's property in order to get there. It is, has a small border at the top that is at the north, sorry, that is, is contiguous with the existing UGB. But again, you're sort of farther away from Malala Avenue and, and, and not quite to South Onaway. So you're kind of in that middle where the main access is, again, those, those two parcels at the top that touch the existing UGB are along Malala Forest Road. Not significant wetlands, not significant constraints. You can see that in the numbers. There's 76.6 acres in this study area, 74 of them are buildable. That could be 267 units over 20 years. Five of the parcels are of the size that are in the running for the industrial, for meeting the industrial land need and they would take up about 46 acres. But again, there's limited access along here, which is something that you look for with industrial compatibility. So it would need to extend water and sewer likely down Malala Forest Road with a lift station at Malala, Malala Forest Road and Onaway. And like I mentioned, limited access to many of the parcels here. It's near residential and agriculture and again, flooding reported in the survey. Moving along to six, and if you have any questions at any time, just stop me. I've been staring at these maps nonstop for weeks, so I'd be happy to chat. So here we've got six. We have in terms of compatibility, there's a little bit of industrial, there's a little bit of residential that has recently been rezoned residential within the UGB on the border of six. Not a lot of constraints, not a lot of wetlands constraints. And you do have Malala Forest Road with a lot larger size of frontage with the contiguous, with the UGB in terms of being contiguous and having access along Malala Forest Road. Again, a number of large parcels here, but these do have access along South Onaway. And you can kind of see that they're just kind of set up very orderly, kind of extending down South Onaway. So in terms of the numbers, this sub area for, for study purposes, it's 70.9 acres, 69 of which are buildable. There's, could be 231 units according to the housing capacities, capacity math set up by the state. There are six large parcels there. They take up about 55 of those 69 acres and they do all have access along South Onaway. It is contiguous with the existing UGB. And then I think we have, similar to our discussion along South Malala Avenue, here we have two eight inch sanitary lines within the vicinity of the northern portion of the, of the, of the properties. One along South Onaway, north of Bear Creek, and one along Malala Forest Road and South Low Road. There is an eight inch water line at the city limits along South Onaway. It's likely that those would need to be upgraded in order to accommodate development here. But that's where the existing lines are that would need to be kind of connected to. Again, near residential and agricultural land, there are some hydrox soils just peeking along the north edge. And it is, if you look in the UGB, that constrained land isn't on this sub area, but it is pretty adjacent. And so again, with that flooding, when there are heavy rains and, and creeks overflow, you, you could have some of that along Malala Forest Road right to the north. And then our last sub area for the exception lands across the south is seven. You're getting closer here, you can see, getting closer over to the 213, a little bit closer up, I think, to things along the 211. It is borders, has a large border with existing EFU land. I will say this, I said this to Planning Commission, I think as this project goes forward, since the work plan has it going through March of 2026, and as an actual border and individual parcels start to become selected and exactly where the border would go, I think it would be great for, for the city to continue to talk to local farmers. I've said this before, not all EFU land is being used in, in, in one, there's no one specific farming use and each different type of use in terms of what they're growing and when they grow it and when they harvest it can be compatible for different things. I know along the, the western edge of seven is I believe into sub area eight is where there's a large solar panels. So again, when you're talking about compatibility, you know, it's important to recognize that not all EFU is being used in exactly the same way in terms of not all EFU is being used in exactly the same way in terms of whether it's compatible for residential or industrial use. So the numbers for this one, this is seventy-six acres, seventy-six of them are buildable, with the little caveat that I've said before, that, that coffee stain in the middle is hydroic soils. They're not currently listed as locally significant wetlands. They may or may not when an, when an inventory is done, when land is actually being brought into the UGB and concept planning starts. So in terms of housing capacity, two hundred and eighty units could fit technically on there, given infrastructure and all the other needs for, for development. There are eight large lots that are within the size that the EOA is looking for. They all have access along South Onaway. It is contiguous with the UGB. And very similar to section six, since South Onaway is sort of the, I won't go read through the exact measurements of the pipes again, but since it's, since it's borders subarea six along South Onaway, it's all the same. The same extension along South Onaway would have to happen, which also in terms of economies of scale, I think, you know, in some ways, I think the, it makes sense to think of six and seven together, because if those expansions are happening and down South Onaway, it would, it would make sense to, to do that for both. So again, it's near residential and technically agricultural land, but when we do our crop map, nothing's really showing up there. So I think it'll be interesting to see, to talk to local farmers about what they're growing and what would be compatible with the, the way that they're using their land. And again, those hydroic soils. So like I mentioned, the, the crop map, we all get to smile a little bit about Christmas trees now. I've zoomed in this time just to the subareas one through seven, just to make it a little bit different. And you can see when we talk about crops, the only thing that shows up for this area, given the data that we have from, I think it's USDA or something that we get our data from. And it says it very small in the corner and I can't read that from here, but it, it's all that's showing up is Christmas trees. And again, you know, Christmas trees are a little more, I don't grow them myself, I'll say, but it's my understanding is they're a little hardier than some of your more sensitive produce crops that have to be kind of safeguarded against neighboring uses more so. So again, it would be interesting as individual parcels are, are selected to engage a little bit further with those local farmers. So when we look at that, I've mentioned all along that each of these subareas, and again, I want to remind you, and I know you know this, but it's not that you're going to say, okay, two's the winner, three's the winner, or we're going to take in these. Probably what ends up happening is some parcels from many different subareas get brought in and some parcels from the subareas don't come in, right? If, if you're, if, if subarea, say, three is something that, that the city feels is very efficient or, but the parts that aren't on Malala Avenue might not be as efficient, right? So again, it might be individual parcels that come in. Here, here are all the parcels that are of the size that the EOA is looking for. And I can tell you that the eight parcels, four in the five to ten acres and four in the ten to twenty acre size are existing in the exception land, in the first priority land. And I've, I've color coded them here for you, but you'll see there aren't any that are over twenty acres. So, and if, even if those eighty or so acres are taken out of the housing, out of the land that could be allocated toward housing, the five hundred and eighty acres in the exception lands would still leave room for the development of well over your residential need, particularly if that residential, residential need goes down because of more recent population forecasts, right? So if all of the five hundred and eighty acres came in and you used eight parcels for industrial, eight of the large parcels for industrial, it could still develop one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one housing units over the next twenty years, which is way above and beyond what you need, which means there's going to be exception land left after you expand. If there's exception land left, sort of on the table, if you want to think about it, there's exception land left that's not utilized by the expansion. In order to then look elsewhere, you have to rely on a different part of the legal framework that actually looks at site characteristics. So then you would be allowed to look at all of the land in our study areas eight through nineteen to say, the site characteristic that we need is it needs to be over twenty acres and compatible with, with industrial uses, meaning less than ten percent slopes and over twenty acres and not heavily environmentally constrained. So you have to have at least twenty buildable acres for industrial on a parcel. Those are pink. Those are the ones that meet those, those site characteristics that have been laid out in the EOA. If you wanted to go to this, you would, you would be allowed to, under the statute, you would be allowed to not use exception land for it, because none of the exception land is suitable for the need, the way it is stated in the EOA, right? None of it is over the twenty acres. And, but it would come with some restrictions. So if you brought it in, you would have to then sort of zone it in a way that it wouldn't be allowed to be, that, that you would have to zone it in a way that preserves the characteristic that made it possible to bring it into the UGB in the first place. So if the characteristic is that it's a large parcel, it, you, your zoning for it would have to be that it's for industrial and cannot. Yes, Mayor?
So what you're saying is, I'm looking really at a specific corner, eleven, twelve, thirteen. That we could make industrial?
You could.
That's horrible.
I'm, yeah, that, my, my suggestion is.
Absolute waste.
Right. My suggestion is not that you do that. I'm saying, I'm saying, these are the, the goal fourteen analysis, where it would take you from here, right? So we're required to do the residential, to meet the residential need. I just showed you that you can do that in your exception lands and your first priority land, which according to goal fourteen, the way it stands today, that's what you got to do.
So goal fourteen is saying that we have to come out this area?
Goal fourteen is saying that you have to, you have to exhaust your first priority land before you can go elsewhere.
So how does that work when most of this, we have no infrastructure set up for, when we have infrastructure budding right up to the end of this and down this road, when it comes to efficiency of the cost and everything else?
Yes, and I will say that you have excellent people on staff, because we've been debating this a big chunk of today. One of the things is, if you think about it, and again, I'm not here as a proponent, I'm just giving you the information. The goal fourteen is saying, you have to, you have to exhaust the urbanized land, right? Even if farmland, exclusive farmland with prime soil would be easier, you can't go there if you have urbanized land, even if it would be cheaper. It isn't a like, it can't just be cheaper. The rule, and it's, and we're putting it in the report, is that it is, I've been told it's prohibitively, it has to be prohibitively expensive, not comparatively. Because if you're comparing high-value farmland with urbanized land, you're comparing apples to oranges. So you can't just say it's cheaper because they're not in the same classification. So once you exhaust the first priority land, then you can go to, to other land. If the first priority land is impracticable, which examples of that I've been told, and we saw this in the city of Canby, if you had exception land on the other side of the river and it would require building a bridge, that's impracticable, right? That is not a practical thing for you to bring that land in. The fact that it is comparatively cheaper is not impracticable. That rule may be changing, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it one of the governor's orders for affordable housing?
Yes.
So then, why is this contradicting that? Because, I mean, at this end, we're looking at five sewage pumps to pump it to the sewage treatment plant. Hold on, Mac, I'm on this. We're looking at five sewage pumps at a million and a half apiece before they even break ground, putting pipe or anything else in. It, it, that doesn't, that probably contradicts itself. Mac, go.
Yeah, so this is, this is the very conversation that we're setting up with the governor's office. Violet just follows the rules that are in.
And I'm not blaming you, I'm just getting.
I get to be the Girl Scout.
And I'm clarifying that this is the exact thing that we're arguing or discussing with the governor's office is exactly what you're talking about. This is exactly why we're stuck. Because it makes no sense to go south from a fiscal perspective, from a political perspective or anything else, right? It, it makes all the sense in the world to go north from a fiscal perspective and a political perspective, both. And so that, that's our problem, is that we're stuck in these rules that don't provide any sort of leeway towards things that are basically common sense for, for, for those of us that are part of the community and know it. And so that's, that's exactly, so I just wanted to clarify that this is exactly the reason that we're, we're beating the drum to the governor's office.
Well, and the staff knows, we've worked on, we've crafted a letter, we've sent it into the governor, we've asked to speak with staff or the, the governor regarding this. So we, what, two, three weeks ago?
We, we did have a meeting with them, a brief meeting about Tuesday? Monday. It was Monday. And we are, we are putting together, part of, part of our process is to get this goal fourteen memo done, because it's, it's supposed to be a raw analysis that doesn't favor one piece of land or disfavor one piece of land, it just makes statements about the land. Hey, this one's not close to sewer, hey, this one is. Without any favoritism whatsoever, that's what this goal fourteen analysis is. And then we will use that as part of our memo to the governor's office to explain the flaws in their system that are producing an undesirable outcome for both the local and state level.
So we are getting a response?
Yes, sir.
Good. And then the last question is, if we get forced into everything south, when this is done, we have to vote on it, correct?
Yes, you guys do.
We.
Yep. So if we, what would happen, say, we don't? Or we vote no?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know. I, I was going to say that.
I'm not trying to be combative, but I, I kind of want to know where we stand when we don't get the answers we want, because I think everybody up here sees the big picture. And that's, we're going to extend the UGB, it's not ever going to be developed because it's not affordable, which unfortunately, people don't like growth, but without growth, it does not offset the rise in costs of everything that the city endures every year, which is potentially going to put us into budget shortfalls down the road.
What I was going to say is Violet used the word prohibitive. I'm not, because that's what's in there. It says prohibitive. And I think it's interesting, because the folks that are using that word and say, well, it's not prohibitive comparatively, but they're not the people that are actually paying for it, designing it and actually doing all those things. And what, what Mac was telling you is we did meet with someone from the governor's office and he's in charge of housing.
Correct.
And then we met with Kathy Heisey, who's on the governor's regional solutions team. There's also a couple of examples out there, Monmouth and Violet raised it, Monmouth and Roseburg. So we're looking into what actually happened there, so we can understand it a little bit better and how it worked. I think there's an option, I don't know if it's going to work, but if at the end of the day, we bring this to you for a UGB adjustment hearing and you all vote no, it's done.
It's done. Define.
Well, the, the staff is going to lay out in front of you a, a, it's going to be a public hearing, there'll be an ordinance, and if you vote no on it, it's, that process is over.
So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what, what recourse there, there would.
I don't know what recourse it would be. Because, because I think, I think the issue and Mac talked about it very clearly with the folks from the state. You know, if you force us to go south, nothing will happen.
So much of it is wetland.
Well, I mean, it's too expensive. And it may be not prohibitive, but it's still too expensive.
It's almost roughs out at about ten times the cost per unit. When you start to get into pump station and buy up extensions and those sorts of things that don't need to happen in that other land. And we're kind of going at it from every angle, just to give you guys a quick update, because I think it's, it's very relevant to what you're asking here. Is that we're, we're kind of attacking this thing from every angle. One angle is that there's an interpretation issue of their own rules that is actually, that is actually making it so that they are not abiding by the chief executive, the governor's number one goal in the state, right? So, so we're saying, hey, we need to produce housing, that's, that's the governor's number one goal, that's been pushed down the cities through a series of laws and rules, right? But we're not going to let you go into the land that would develop tomorrow at one-tenth the cost. So it, it ends up being a catch-22 for cities. And then, oh, by the way, you're going to abide by our rules to expand your UGB. And then when you don't produce housing, because it's cost prohibitive, now you're going to be subject to the, you know, the recourse from the housing production strategies, et cetera, because you're not producing the housing that you need to produce. But we've made it so that you can't do that. And so I'm trying to make sure that if nothing else, that gets on record. But we're also approaching it from a legislative perspective to say, hey, maybe legislation is the answer. And then also from just an extension perspective, because there are some new rules coming down the pike that are actually easing some of, some of this. And we think we might be able to piggyback on those if we can wait to try and push this through until those rules hit on January one of twenty twenty-six. So there's like three or four different angles that, that we're trying with the governor's office to try and give them options on how, how, how can we help you?
Right.
Okay, so here's, here's four or five different ways that you could help us. And so that's, that's kind of where we are right now. So it's exactly what you're talking, I mean, it's literally word for word, almost what we've explained to them.
Yeah. I was going to say, just because it's my slide that sort of started this, I want to make sure that this slide is, that, that we're all clear. And I think we're all really having the same conversation, but I think there's a couple of things that I think are worth just stating out loud. So we talk about EFU land and we talk about the governor's goal for affordable housing and that's kind of, you know, we all know that that's very much in the forefront. You know, Oregon is also based on preserving our farmland, right? So I think if there were really active thriving farms that were an asset to the, you know, to the community, we wouldn't be having this conversation, because you wouldn't be sitting here, having worked with you guys enough over the last year, you wouldn't be sitting here saying, yeah, but it's cheaper to go that way, so we're just going to let in this farm that, that everybody loves and goes and does you pick or whatever, and we're going to use it for our industrial land. We wouldn't be having this conversation. So I think part of it is, the rules are set up to preserve that farmland, but as I said, not all EFU land and not all uses, farming uses are exactly the same. And I think what we heard from, from landowners who came to our outreach, who responded to our survey, is that because there is such residential growth in the subdivision to the north, and that has sort of happened naturally over, you know, the last twenty years, that there are services there, and then everybody sort of sees that as the direction for residential. Again, if it was a bustling farm that was producing a ton of produce for the farmers' markets, we wouldn't be having this conversation, right? So we have to show that while on paper, you know, this is high-value farmland and this is urban land and those definitions make sense. What we're hearing though, is also even from DLCD, was we don't have a mechanism in our rules to apply a subjective and say, oh, yeah, these are the rules, but we can see that the outcome isn't furthering what we want, so we'll do something different. There just isn't a mechanism, the rules are kind of strict. And so what I'm hoping is that when you actually look at the way that the land is being used or what it's really valuable for, it starts to become really more, more practical. And what I shared was that there's a Senate bill recently that is around urban reserves, which is another mechanism that could be discussed. I know it was discussed about ten years ago, was about making that north part urban reserves, and then it, I don't think hap, like, or in twenty fourteen, there was some discussion about it. And, and for, for some reason at the time, that didn't happen. If it was urban reserves, it would just come in first for, for the residential uses that you need. But the urban, the Senate bill was discussing urban reserves, and instead of using the impracticable or prohibitively expensive, it used unreasonable, which is a little bit of a different, for the former attorneys in the room, like me, a little bit of a different standard. Again, I'm not giving legal advice. I'm just saying that appears to be a different standard. So it does seem like there's some movement or some recognition. And again, city of, of Roseburg and Monmouth and, and other places, I think, are seeing that there's something missing. there's something missing in the rules. Um, and so my hope is that either whether it's the legislature who writes a new rule, or the governor's office who, uh, who pushes to, uh, for a different interpretation of the rules, um, whatever it is, it, it does seem like there's a mechanism here that's missing, and I think everybody actually kind of agrees on that.
So I have one question, too. We had a comment come back from ODOT regarding the roundabout, that it was not set up for population growth. Now, shocker, but if we were to take a stab at where people go to work, the majority of the people, the traffic flow that leaves this city, which direction would you say the majority of it goes?
North.
Right. Oregon City. Well, guess what? This is north of the roundabout, would not affect, affect it in traffic, which, if we need to get ODOT together, that ODOT statement together, and say that us building there, I think they were saying, if we built there, then it would affect their planning department and the issues, but how would it affect it when the roundabout's here? Traffic's gonna be going there during rush hour, we're just gonna have general traffic coming to town to go grocery shopping. Couldn't that be something we can use with the governor and say? ODOT's saying that it's not gonna be able to handle this kind of traffic if, you know, because of planning, if we built to the south?
Already done. It's part of my memo.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, it's not, I'm just.
It's good when everyone.
If I could add one, a couple of things, I think, and, and this was explained to the governor's office, but unfortunately, I was talking to people who weren't born at the time. Um, Senate Bill one hundred was adopted in nineteen seventy-two that created the land use program for the state of Oregon, and no, Mr. Zinder, I am not being sucked in. This is factual information.
From interim city planner.
Yeah. Um, so in nineteen, so since that time, though, cities developed, uh, urban growth boundaries that were adopted and comprehensive plans were developed, and we're not the only city in this boat where our, uh, U G B was identified in nineteen eighty to eighty-two, something like that, and the city was under two thousand people. And if you think about what was going on in town back in those days, you might have thought that the city was gonna go south because of where the mills were located and all of those things, but all that is gone, okay? And somewhere in the nineties, things went north. And there's, there isn't a mechanism that they built in for that, because what we're trying to do is apply forty-year-old rules to something that's occurring today, and it's just not working. And it's, it's like trying to put a peg in a, a round peg in a square hole, or the other way around, and it's just causing problems. And it's nonsensical, and I think people that we've been working with for a long time actually see that.
And that's, yeah, it's part of the, the, ODOT stuff is part of the, the cost analysis as far as the, the ten times more expensive, that's part of that cost analysis, and so all that goes in there broken down in terms of infrastructures, just a way.
So, so there is a frustration model there, it's not as easy as everybody thinks, and Violet's right, she's just doing what the process.
No attack on you.
Oh, no, of course, of course.
You have a job, unfortunately, you're the messenger, and if it came across, I'm frustrated with you, it's absolutely not.
It, it has not.
I'm sick of everything south of us, making everything such a joke that everybody has to work twice as hard to deal with.
Yeah.
You know, that's what it comes down to.
Well, I, I'd say the good news to that, though, is when we had our meeting on, uh, on Monday, um, we weren't really met with any sacred cows with refer, with regards to the land use structure, we are, we were getting met with a sort of, how can we help? And, and.
Yes.
Oh, you know, a- and, and they wanna hear more, they wanna hear more from us, and then, and, and then hear from us specifically how we think they can help. So I, I was very encouraged from that, from that piece, that we weren't met with a senate bill in hundreds, you know, and the, the land use, and it's gonna, they were like, well, maybe, maybe you are the guinea pig that's gonna, um, look, start to look at pieces of that.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, what, yeah.
And so I'll say also, the, the very end, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, is there a follow-up meeting that you've scheduled for your cell?
Um, so again, and, and I didn't quote you on my report, but, um, in the, we're working through the draft of the report, but I did try to make it very clear that, because one of the sections that we have to do in the analysis is cite to the comp plan, and so I cite to the comp plan everything that the comp plan says about U G B expansion and what's gonna happen with U G B expansion, I made it very clear that this was written in, in, in nineteen eighty-two, right? And it was based on, even when it was updated in twenty fourteen, and I know there's been some subsequent updates, uh, you know, kind of piecemeal here and there, things passed and changed, um, but even when it was updated in twenty fourteen, if you look at the document, it's citing to twenty oh nine, uh, uh, or two thousand and nine, for those of us, two thousand and nine, uh, data, right? Economic data. So again, very different, I even cited the fact that there used to be five working mills and, you know, and, and where those were located, and what, what's happening today in terms of being kind of one mill and at part-time, and, you know, or at half-production and things like that. So that's all going into the report, and it sort of ends, um, my analysis at this stage at least, sort of ends with this, uh, slide behind you. Um, and again, it's just saying, if the city elects to look for those two twenty-plus acre, here are your candidates. And I have a table in there, and you, you guys will see it eventually when it's, when it's polished, and we've cut all the typos. Um, so, um, you know, it basically takes each one of those and says, okay, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, what are the advantages of using it for industrial, and what are the disadvantages? And I think it's, uh, it would be very clear, and it will say in the report, that there's a disadvantage of trying to use twelve and thirteen for industrial, because its heights and best use is really for residential. Um, and so if it can't happen today because of the rules, it, it should still be there when it is time to expand for residential in the future, um, so it shouldn't be taken up with industrial. I believe, uh, some of the other lots we're looking at are in subarea, uh, ten, I think, uh, behind the.
Waste water treatment.
Waste water treatment plant, uh, sort of in the fly zone of the airstrip, um, that has, and along the two eleven, that has some benefits for industrial uses, you could kind of see that it might be a candidate. But again, my report will just sort of end with a table with all of these, saying, if the city decides that it does want to go forward, here's your legal framework for, uh, site characteristics expansion, here are the parcels that would be, uh, compar- you know, that would be candidates, um, and here are their, their techniques. So by doing this, we also will have it in there that there are a lot of services near twelve and thirteen, um, and that they are really set up for an expansion of residential uses. And so that'll go into the report. Again, this is a raw sort of like, just here, here's the facts, um, of what, you know, um, and I did set it up in a way, um, that, like I said earlier, if certain parcels make sense out of subareas, it'll be very easy for the city to sort of figure that out and use, use the information that we have in this report. So I'm trying to build up in terms of when we talk about it, also making it very clear that the population projections, um, and in fact, Matt called a number of times where I called it the twenty twenty-two H and A, when it's the twenty twenty-three H and A, uh, because that's the data it was using on, right? That's, and at this point in the process, through all the things that we've had to do to get all of that done, we're pretty far out from the twenty twenty-two numbers. Um, and at this point, I, I do think there have been some adjustments, as was brought up earlier, uh, COVID through the population projections, particularly population projections, I've seen this for a lot of clients on the coast, um, where they actually grew by a lot more, um, than was predicted from twenty, uh, two thousand, uh, twenty twenty to say twenty twenty-two, they were supposed to grow by a little bit, and they grew by a lot, uh, say, places like Astoria, I think, had, had a lot more growth. So, um, so there are some fluctuations, uh, and so again, I make it very clear in the report that this is based on, you know, um, some outdated, um, uh, comp plan stuff, some outdated expectations for where the city would grow, uh, you now have newer E O A, um, and you, um, but the H and A as it stands is based on those twenty twenty-two numbers, and, and says that you need those num- those units.
And, and just to clarify one more time, uh, just in case it wasn't clear, with the employment lands, you guys don't, well, when I say have to, the state law doesn't expect you to have to do that, you get to pick. That's, that's one where it's like, hey, with the housing stuff, we're supposed to do that according to the rules, I don't know what the recourse is, with this, there is no supposed to. You can, or you cannot, hundred percent your choice, so if the lots that are up there and available for that at the time don't make sense, my recommendation would be to just not bring them in. That, that's, um, 'cause you're absolutely right, like Violet mentioned, I mean, at least a few of those make zero sense, um, so.
Yeah, and, and of all the pink ones, there's, the, again, the E O A says you're, you ideally would have two. So, uh, again, I'm not suggesting that they come in, I'm not suggesting that they're used for industrial, I'm not suggesting all of them, again, they're just the candidates that you would look for and evaluate pros and cons, which ones of those would make the most sense, and if you find one that you feel like does make sense, as Mac said, I completely agree, if you find one that makes sense, then you could do the expansion. If you don't, um, find one that makes sense, don't, you know, you could not do the expansion, and there wouldn't necessarily be like any legal recourse. On residential need, I also don't know, I wasn't prepared for that question tonight, but again, if you, if, if you don't actually expand your U G B within the timeframe to accommodate residential need, I, I, I really applaud you, um, Mayor, in your comments about, um, you know, it doesn't necessarily help us, growth is gonna happen, and we get on a for, you know, we, you deal with a lot of affordability issues, so ideally, you don't just not grow, you know, you don't just not expand because you can't find the right options, ideally, you're allowed to expand in a way that makes sense.
All right. Anything else, ma'am?
No.
No, sir, that was it, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew all that.
Mr. Huff. All right. Well, thank you for coming in tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you, you guys are always very kind. There's another McDonald's chicken, spicy chicken sandwich I might share for the ride home. Happy.
All right, up next, pilot program, Mr. Huff, pay for your report.
Where's my pilot? There it is. So last week, or last council meeting, um, we got to discuss a little bit about the pilot program that Clackamas County had enacted in twenty twenty-two, April of twenty-two, uh, became effective in July of twenty-two. And what the pilot program is, is a payment in lieu of taxes pilot, and, um, it, it's, it's, I'll give you a summary, and then we can talk a little bit about what, uh, has transpired since our last council meeting. But, um, the, we discovered this by chance, just kinda like, hey? And, um, that was back in March, I think it was, and I know Mr. Corthell tried to do a little digging, uh, couldn't get any answers, so we went straight to the county administrator, and eventually we got, we got to someone who, who could talk to us. And what it was, was the state legislature adopted some rules that allows a county to, um, apply a pilot program to an affordable housing project by the, uh, county housing authority obtaining one percent ownership in that development. So that's what happened, and in twenty-two, the county, the county commissioners adopted an ordinance approving it and signed an I G A, and what they do is, they pay twenty-five thousand dollars a year to, uh, the housing authority, and then the housing authority turns those dollars over to the county, and then the county distributes those dollars. What was happening is, the county was distributing those dollars based on some county-wide system, and if you look at page one fourteen, uh, to one twenty, it will tell you, it will show you how the county was distributing those, those dollars. So there was funding from this twenty-five thousand dollars that was going to the Lake Oswego School District, the Wilsonville School District, uh.
Clackamas.
Clack- North Clackamas School District, and all over the county, and, and where the, uh, city of Malala specifically, and the, uh, Malala Fire District, we're getting kind of a pittance of those funds. And I know there's other districts there, but the, the issue is, you know, for us, is for these affordable housing projects like this one on, um, on Main Street, and on a way there, we provide a higher amount of service to those apartments, much higher than we do anywhere else, and both the fire department and the police department specifically, and so, um, it's, it's a bit of a funding problem. The other thing that did not happen is the county did not talk to the city of Malala, did not talk to you all about how you felt about this, what you thought about this, and asked you to support it or not support it, didn't happen. So to make a long story short, we did get to the county staff, they did explain to us what this was, we, this is the only pilot pro- project in Clackamas County, this is it.
We got lucky.
And so we did get to them, they did recognize, I do have to give them some credit, once they found out what it was, they did recognize the problem of phase one, the problem of phase, I call it phase one and phase two, but, um, they were distributing the funding countywide, there was no, there was no direction of how to distribute those funds to the, uh, county tax assessor, and so they just used a blanket county distribution system. So last Thursday, Clackamas County Commissioners did approve an amendment to the I G A, and they adopted the, the Malala taxing district distribution schedule, and that is, you can see that, um, it's included in your information, it's on page eighty-nine, that's what they adopted, that's the Malala taxing district schedule, but this affects a lot of things locally, it would have affected our police bond, um, it would affect the school districts, um, middle school bond. And it, it severely was affecting the Malala Fire District, probably even more than the city of Malala in reality. So, um, and that's one of the reasons why I saw, uh, Chief Stafford here tonight, because I was keeping him informed on what was going on. The, um, so the problem I see here is, moving into the futures, each year, the value of things goes up, the cost of, of things go up, and so we bring in higher tax levels based on the three percent growth that we get every year. So our amount that we're gonna get, we're gonna get the same amount, but it's, our, our value for that amount is gonna go down every year, if that makes sense. Um, we may have some arguments, I know that, um, when we, we did a tour of the units over here, one of our city councilors, who happens to be here tonight, asked the developer if the tax breaks that they were, that they wanted would go to lowering rent, and, and the individual said no. So, um, it goes to build, the ability to build more apartments elsewhere. So, you know, our issue is the ability to be able to provide services to, to the community, including that apartment complex, as well as the balance of the community. So the, the county recognized it, and if you look at, um, page one, oh, wait, that's not page one, I should put, you know, I should put my glasses on. Um, ninety-one, ninety and ninety-one, that's the county staff memo to the commissioners for last Thursday, and I highlighted a couple of important sections in there that you can read. Um, but they did say in there that, uh, at the end of the last statement, um, that this policy should address, among other factors, the balance between financial incentive, incentives offered and financial benefits received, the duration of affordability commitments, and the necessity for communication and consultation with local jurisdictions affected by the agreement. That didn't happen, okay? That didn't happen the first time, but they are recognizing that. So phase two of this, so, so I should say, phase one, I call it, did we fix the existing problem? The funding is going to the Malala taxing district, as it should. Phase two of this is a recognition that we're gonna lose money over time, over the twenty year period, and there were three years before this, that the funding was dispersed in that blanket Clackamas County distribution schedule. So I know the mayor was thinking about going to the commissioner meeting tomorrow night. So I know the mayor was thinking about going to the commissioner meeting tomorrow night. I, I suggested that he might want to have a conversation with you all before he did that. Um, and I think the other thing is, is that, is that if you watch the county commissioners, they said, well, is the city of Malala happy now? Well, they actually said that and, and it's like, not really, because I actually believe that Clackamas County undercut your taxing authority as a city council for the city of Malala. They didn't ask you and they did it without telling you. And you're the taxing authority for this community and they undercut you. Now, they used a state statute, a law that the state legislature created to do that. But there's been other situations in this county where commi- councils have been asked that question and they've said no. And I think the commissioners need to know that you probably would have said no.
Yeah, probably.
Be my guess. So anyway, that's my report.
Saturday, I had a phone call with Chair Roberts and the question came up, are we happy? And I said, with phase one, yeah. And he goes, what do you mean phase one? So I explained phase one. I said, now we're going to deal with phase two. I said, I really think you guys screwed up at the direction of the state. The state made something that you guys fell into. And I said, this issue isn't just potentially the city of Malala and Clackamas County. I said, the potential issue here is every city in the state against their county. Um, and I, you know, it's not a big secret. The county has some budget shortfalls right now. And I explained to him, I said, by you guys keeping this going, you guys are leaving money on the table. You're forcing our city to leave money on the table. And you also enacted something without an ordinance or resolution by the taxing authority of Malala. And I, and Dan has been in contact with Chad. I honestly, I think we need to fight this. Because, and I, it'd be real easy to get some other cities behind us, because as soon as they hear about this, they're going to go, yeah, no, we don't want this happening to us. Um, and the other question that I still have that I'm waiting, somebody hopefully can answer it, is last Tuesday, when they brought it to the commissioners for their consent agenda, they, the city, county, county staff brought it up as forty units, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
There's a lot more there now. So did the whole entire property, phase one, phase two appraise? Are they running off of a twenty-five thousand dollar appraisal for the entire thing? Or is that second phase getting taxed at a different rate?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. We don't know the answers to those questions, because if you go back to twenty, April of twenty-two, I don't recall, and we haven't, we haven't done the work yet. When did they actually begin construction? Because when somebody begins construction on an apartment complex, they're not going to go onto the tax roll until they receive occupancy. Okay? And so we would have to go back to, to that. And then if it's, let's say it's, it's, uh, um, after March of a year, if it's April or May, it won't go on the tax roll until the next year. So what we don't know is how, how that worked. I mean, did they just begin to pay twenty-five thousand dollars immediately? And then they dispersed those funds, even if the apartments weren't quite completed yet?
Right.
Um, because I don't know, when did we give occupancy to phase one? You guys remember?
You're eighteen months?
Early twenty-three, I think. I say early twenty-three. So this would have been in place before that.
It does appear that this, um, only applies to the phase one, because it, 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 even though it doesn't specify an address, which I find very odd. Um, it does say a sixty-unit affordable housing apartment project. And that would represent that phase, phase one. The phase two is forty more units. So I don't think that this impacts phase two.
So are, because my concern is, is that other phase two, if, if they're just running off the one appraisal, there's a lot of money being still left on the table. And that's, you don't think that's happening?
I don't, because they are separate tax lots and separate, um, separate properties.
So they've only gotten this on one property and us fighting it could potentially keep it from becoming two?
Which potentially.
Which might also explain kind of why I think the question was asked when you guys went out and, and walked the, the area there with the commissioners a couple of years back. Um, I think they asked a question like, well, we could use, we're not really a question. It's like, hey, what, you know, we could use more tax abatement. And I think that the question was more, um, and now we understand.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't know. At the time, we didn't have any idea that, because it was already in place.
Right. And the other thing that was brought up in the commissioners meeting was that this is to help them with them being affordable housing and to offset some of the costs for the lower rents. Well, their rent isn't that much lower, number one. Number two, they get vouchers.
Mm-hmm.
So this is just an added spiff to who owns it and who's running it at the expense of every person in this city who doesn't want apartments and everything else. So I, I'm hoping council would be okay with Mr. Huff working with our ci- our city lawyer to, attorney to fight this, because I'd like to see this entire thing reversed back to, you know, our taxing authority that we were voted in to do.
I agree.
How many years back did you say it would go?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
But they didn't, they wouldn't have started getting taxed until they took occupancy.
Well, that's how a normal, in normally, somebody who's not in a, in a pilot program, they're a private development, that's how it works for, for them. This one began in July of twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sure a little more light on that too. Um, so if, if you'll notice, I think, uh, where's the distributions? The distribution's totaled twenty-four thousand ninety-two, even though the agreement is twenty-five thousand. That's because right now that would be the full tax bill. So they, they right now are paying the full tax bill. Um, but obviously that will increase three percent a year, um, as it, as it always does with the value of the, of, of the, um, property and buildings. Um, so that, that will increase three percent per year. So do that forty times with compound interest. Um, you know, it'll be, it'll be probably a year or two before the bill is a little bit, or the, the payment is a little bit smaller than the bill. And then after that, it'll consistently get further and further from what the bill would be. So the bill would be how much, you know, continue to rise while the payment stays the same.
And it, it looks like in this agreement thing here, it says that the partnership agreed to make a twenty-five thousand annual payment for twenty years, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand forty-three, to permit the authority to make a payment in lieu of taxes to Clackamas County. I like that these, um, unlike other property tax exemptions, this exemption requires no local approval.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. And that's in the staff report from April twenty-two. So, excuse me.
So, go ahead, ma'am.
So we, so we're talking about, if I understand correctly, if we fight it and we want to try to regain, regain what we lost for two years, we're talking about possibly gaining fifty thousand dollars?
Hmm.
Uh-uh.
Closer to ten thousand.
Yeah.
Closer to ten thousand.
Mm-hmm.
We only get that, that much. The money is, remember, it's all distributed.
Right. Oh, yes. Okay.
I mean, we're not, everybody lost on this.
Yeah, Malala Fire District, Malala School District would all be in position to gain about ten thousand, some a little more, some a little less, but it's.
Is that over the twen- just the past three years or the next until twenty years?
So that would be those first two years of missed payments, because you collect about sixty-two hundred. And I think we were, I think we were on there for about six hundred before, so about fifty-six hundred difference, about eleven thousand. Um, the Fire District a little less, probably about ten. I don't remember the numbers off top. I have about ten thousand total that they were.
So that's for the three years passed or is that for the whole length of the contract?
No, that's for the previous.
Yes, I was doing it at two years. I don't know if it's.
I think it's, I think it was great.
That we're going to see forward.
Well, and that seeing it going forward is already taken care of though.
No, it's not.
No, they're locked in at the twenty-five thousand.
No interest.
Yeah.
Yeah. So each year it's going to be a little bit less.
Each year it's going to be a little bit less, but the payments are going to be allocated properly now.
Yes.
You're, we're getting that one payment reallocated or something.
Based on the, based on the taxing district that we're in, yes.
And I think that's the twenty-four payment and the twenty-two and twenty-three are what we're missing, but I, I, we would have to get the numbers.
Yeah.
So I'm not exactly sure on the timing of those either.
So if you look at page, uh, because the county staff report from last Thursday shows it on page ninety-one, that's how, that's the taxing district for Malala that they're showing there. And it shows all the, the amounts that each taxing district receives. And you can see the highlight on there, I highlighted the city of Malala. That's what we should receive and, and for last tax year, that's what we will get. And going forward, we'll get that, whatever percentage of that is. And then you see the city of Malala bond, that's the police bond. We're going to get that amount. So, and then if you, you go down further, what is that, page one fourteen to one twenty, they show the, those are, those are the, um, did you get those or did Susan find those, Mac?
Susan Barney's.
Okay, Susan Duffy, our senior accountant, found, found those. Those are what was being distributed. And I think city of Malala, kind of hard to read, sorry. But it was like, getting a hundred and five dollars?
Hang on, I gotta get past Lake Oswego School District here.
Well, I guess, I guess you know where my questions are going.
Yeah.
Is, is weighing the cost of doing this with what we might possibly recoup.
Um, I would say MAC is pretty close. It's either close to ten thousand dollars that we didn't get or fifteen, depending on if it's, um, probably higher than that a little bit.
What about future tax increases?
And then it's hard to predict that. You'd almost have to do it on an annual basis. So.
But we've, we've typically seen three percent growth in property values every year and that's the cap. So if your property value grows eight percent, the taxable value can only go up three percent under our Oregon's tax scheme.
I mean, we can figure that out based on the three percent growth, but.
The, the other potential is, is if they decide to take phase two and put it in front of them, whereas if we go and stop this now, it ends it. That's, that, that is my big picture is we need to make a message to the county, you guys can't do this. It's taking our taxing authority away. The state made a mistake by passing this bill and the county can go after the state, you know? So that's, it's, in a way, it's a bit more than just a financial. It's a bit stopping the issue so we don't have to come back to dealing with this again or future councils.
Right, absolutely. And, um, and I'm, I'm in agreement with that, that part of it. Are we trying then? Are we trying to get the original agreement wiped out?
Actually.
That's, that would be your.
Is that what?
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
So you would like to go back and, and have that agreement between the, uh, developer and the county?
Am I reading this right? That it says termination? Um, uh, where am I? I forget what document.
You're in the agreement.
Inter-governor agreement, intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the, oh, this is between the county and the housing authority.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind.
And, you know, we also have some resources with, between just locally, we have Chief Stafford. Um, and then we can also start talking with groups like LOC and OMA, because this isn't just a Malala Clackamas County thing. This effect, this could happen to any city in this state with their county.
Well, and certainly this developer has developed a number of other properties already. So there may be, this may already be happening in some other.
It could. But if you read the, I can only, you, we should only take them at their word. But the county staff report from Mary Rumbaugh, um, it does say the housing authority currently has no plans to enter into another pilot payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Should a future pilot agreement be considered, the housing authority recommends that prior to any such consideration, the board adopt formal policy guidance. This policy should address, among other factors, the balance, and I read that part before, and consultation with local jurisdictions affected by the agreement. So they are stating what should have happened, you know, back in twenty-two.
Yeah.
But still isn't, that isn't right now going to get us the money back till twenty seventeen.
No, and I think that.
The city deserves.
And I think.
I'm not sure that it's worth the.
It may not be.
Yeah.
It may not be. But it is irritating.
It's irritating as heck. Very irritating.
Well, I, and, and actually I think that, I saw a commissioner today and I didn't have a chance to really talk to him, but, um, so we didn't have that, this conversation. He probably would have asked me if I was happy. Because they blamed everything on me in their staff report.
Oh, wow.
They ignored how many letters I sent them. All right, anything else? Anybody else have any questions, ideas, thoughts, suggestions?
I got a couple.
Go for it.
You don't mind. So one, one thing I just wanted to point out is obviously there's, there's a sixty thousand dollar payment that the county's supposed to be here. I don't know if they have provided yet.
They did.
They did finally. So.
They did finally.
You know, to some extent, just thought food for thought, if, you know, that's going to be an ongoing payment that it could sour relations, you know, that, that's a food for thought for you guys. I just wanted to point that one out. Um.
Sour relations between us and the county?
Yeah, as far as, depending on how you handle the situation, just, just wanted to throw it out there that that, that payment does come. So, um, or now, I wasn't sure if it ever had come.
And what's that for?
Couple of weeks ago, they did.
They finally did come. For the mental health specialist.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it did get approved.
It finally did.
Finally paid.
Oh, good.
Um.
I was looking for this kind of stuff and I did see that it was written oddly, but.
Okay.
And the, the other thing I was going to say is I would, you know, just from my own opinion, I would certainly think that we'd want to follow up on, keep a, keep an eye on or make comment on that they need to have a policy that they're involving cities and, and just backing up their director that seems to make that statement at the end of her thing to say, hey, she's right. This is out of line. Um, so I mean, that, that was just my two senses. I think backing her up would be a good thing, because it seems like she's, she was not there. She was not the one who caused this issue. I want to make that clear. So backing her up might be good to make sure that they're actually putting a policy together that puts notice out and allows cities an opportunity to comment and, you know, deliberate on this stuff too.
And I, I actually believe the state put the, the statute and the law together in this way, because they knew cities would probably object. So they removed the requirement of the county to gain approval from the local taxing district. So that's probably the purpose behind it. Um, and you might, if you take Mac's advice, you could take that final paragraph from Murray Rumbaugh's letter or, uh, staff report. That could be your report tomorrow night at the county commissioner meeting to encourage them.
We said I wasn't going, so I made other plans.
You can submit written comment.
Yeah, but, you know, written comment now is just not as exciting. You say, please read publicly. They don't do it.
Yeah.
They don't put the right inflection in there, do they?
No.
Yeah, I, I think we should just, they, they're, they are bringing it back to us. They realize they screwed up. And said, we should, we should all be notified from now on, if they go with that.
Yeah. And, and I do know, I will say that. Yeah, and, and I do know, I will say that one, two, three of the five commissioners weren't on the commission.
Right.
When this was done.
Yeah. And I, I, for that amount of money, I think we'd spend more in lawyer fees and stuff, I, it.
Eh, that's true.
Mac, just for.
Worth it.
Factual stake, could you get us a dollar amount that you think roughly we, we're gonna lose?
Absolutely.
Interest rates, just, just so you guys can see in front of you, because I can imagine somebody's gonna watch this and say, you guys just wasted, and they have their math, and we have the actual math.
So what are you trying to do, you want them, the five or ten thousand that, that we've already lost, or are you wanting the agreement?
The future.
The future.
The interest going up, the percentage that goes up, I just wanna see what that number is.
Yeah, but.
For the next seventeen years.
Right.
What is, what, what we're losing as a city, because if, if we're not gonna go any further, the next issue that comes up from the county, I can say, hey, you know, we just lost thirty thousand dollars because you didn't communicate with us, are you sure you wanna do this again? It, it, just having that factual number for, as a, we'll say a bargaining chip, when we have issues and we need to talk with the county, that's, it's kinda what it's for.
And it, there, I, there will have to be one assumption on there, which is the, 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 the growth in property values, but there hasn't been a year in the last, I don't know how many, maybe COVID, but, um, that they haven't exceeded the three percent in order to max out the property tax increase, so I'll be assuming three percent, but I'll put that on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's no problem.
And we're, and we're losing that interest because of the fact that this agreement capped at twenty five thousand dollars.
Right.
Right.
Right. And this agreement cannot be broken.
That's what, that's what I'm looking for.
It can't be changed, and it can't be broken, so.
Right.
We're stuck with it.
So had they, had they allocated the funds appropriately to begin with, you guys wouldn't be at a loss at all right now, because their tax rate hasn't hit twenty five thousand, and so even, it, you know, they could sign an agreement for fifty thousand, but they only pay what the actual tax rate would be, up to fifty thousand.
Right.
Right, so in this case, we're at twenty four thousand eight hundred ninety-two, um, with three percent next year, we should be exceeding that, yeah, we should be exceeding that, about seventy, we have twenty five five, so you lose five hundred next year, and then, um, you know, continue to lose, you know, another, you know, twelve hundred, then fourteen hundred, then, you know.
Which, I mean, we do still have a little bit of a bargaining chip with the county because of the fact of their budget shortfalls, there, we're not the only ones starting next year losing money. They're losing money too, because this is the tax money that comes to them also. So this isn't, you know, I'm, I'm sure the public probably isn't gonna appreciate them leaving money on the table by signing agreements like this. Anything else by anybody? All right, moving on, staff communications. Mr. Zinder.
Done communicating for the night.
What'd you say?
I said I'm done communicating for the night.
Now we didn't.
And we are thankful.
Cindy. Kristy.
I have no report, thank you.
Okay, Mac?
I just have one thing, um, I put a piece of paper on your guys' desk as I walked around in between the work session and the regular. Says, Dear Mac Corthell, really, it's Dear City of Malala, I just am representing you guys on this one. Um, thank you for submitting a request for community project funding to Congresswoman Bynum's office, I'm excited to share that your project, Malala Water Intake Project, is one of the fifteen projects the Congresswoman has chosen to submit to the House Appropriations Committee, congratulations. You can view the full list of, um, projects, et cetera, goes on to share a little bit more about the process, we still have, we still have to make it out of committee and then through the, through the full house vote. Um, so there's still a couple steps to go, but it's positive news, we were selected to move on to the next steps, which is great. It's the first step, so.
Yeah.
So I wanted to share this, two, two million dollar grant, um, for the water intake project, which would cover, it looks like about forty percent of the, um, total construction cost, so.
Wow, fantastic.
Building those relationships helps. Anything else tonight, sir?
Uh, oh, just that Chief Yelkes Park, the, um, uh, the play equipment should be delivered here within the next week, um, and should be going in, um, shortly after that, we're sequencing some things, so we're not driving over new stuff to, you know, build stuff and then breaking it. Um, but, uh, Counselor Gilmer knows what I mean here. So we are, we are, we're trying to sequence some things and get that set up, but, um, yeah, that playground should be going in, that doesn't mean the park will be open yet, uh, there's still some infrastructure and things to build, but it's moving along well, that project's progressing really well, we've been really happy with the contractor that's out there, they're doing a great job, so.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Mr. Huff?
Oh, just one thing, um, I went to a library district task force meeting today. So that, this'll go on till probably the end of this year, meetings periodically. So, and I, and I gotta say, I, I think, you know, with the library taxing district, where we get our funding from the life, to operate the library, every library throughout the county that a city operates is a little bit different, you know, we, we have autonomy to use the money for the most part for the library, and that's how we fund it. Ours is very unique and well-run, um, they're very creative uh, with what they do and how they serve our community, um, and, and I think it's interesting, cause there's, there's some age-old issues that are, just keep coming back, you know, some of them is people, and there's a couple of people that are very vocal in the unincorporated areas that don't like that the cities are running the libraries, but we are, um, cause they can't vote for you all. But, but we do serve the unincorporated areas, and we serve them at the same rate we serve the city residents. We have a bookmobile, not very many people have those, so, um, anyway, that'll go on for a while. And there, there's representation all around the table. There's two city managers, one from the rural area and one from the urban area, same thing with library directors, same thing with mayors. And so we're all supposed to be talking to our individual group folks. So, you're gonna get a call, oh, you already did.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor Sandy.
It, it'll be interesting, it'll be interesting. And it's, it, the other thing that's interesting is, even though per capita, we get one of the lower rates, because the way the funding's set up, it's per capita, I can't remember the exact amount, how many people in the unincorporated area that we serve, but then the city population isn't deter, isn't determined by population, it's determined by assessed value. So who do you think gets the highest amount of money? So we're one of the lower ones because of that, and, um, but we also don't have financial problems either.
Right.
Even though we're one of the lower ones, so. People are looking at us like, how are you running your library, it's like, well, we do it right. We got good people and we do it right. So, there you go.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Bartholomew.
I have nothing.
All right, Counselor Gilmer.
I have nothin', nothing to report.
All right, Counselor Schenkel.
I have nothing.
Counselor Childress.
I have nothing to report.
Holy cow.
Well, I have something.
Okay, good.
Uh, the Park CPC meeting is gonna be next Thursday, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, June nineteenth, at five thirty, I believe it's gonna be at City Hall. It was originally scheduled for Fox Park, but it's been changed to City Hall. Along with that, the weather's warming up and school's out for summer, so be on the lookout for kids running around our neighborhoods and be a little more cautious with what's going on, cause they are gonna be out in the streets playing. Um, outside of that, that's pretty much all I've got.
All right, thank you, sir. Did you think of something, I heard you mind going over here.
Oh, no, I just need to talk to him after.
Oh. This Saturday, eleven to three, um, the Malala Grange is having a preparedness class again. Do you need directions?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Uh, there's gonna be like a seminar, I think from like, or, I think it's eleven to four, and there's gonna be a seminar from like two to four, but lots of different groups there, on preparedness for natural disasters or fires. County will be there, um, let's see, what else? And, yes, I have this nice letter I need to read, um. This afternoon, I received, uh, Councilor Botzford's resignation from city council as she and her family are moving outside the city limits. Since this was not an item on this evening's agenda, a reso, resolution declaring the vacancy will not be brought up, brought to the council till June twenty-fifth, city council meeting. Uh, so, we will bring this up in two weeks for all the formalities, open the position, open the application process, thirty day process, um, people get prepared if you wanna do an application, it'll be coming out. We can't even start the applications until next council meeting also, so, uh, next meeting, stay tuned, get ready, here we go. So, I personally wanna thank Counselor Botzford for doing this, I, I do appreciate her time here and all her work with the chamber and representing them here at the city council and her planning commission time. So, without any further ado, if there isn't anything else, I will adjourn the Malala City Council for the next five minutes, and we will come back with a MIRA meeting. We adjourn at nine, or excuse me, eight fifty-six. Good evening, this is the Malala Urban Renewal Agency meeting for Wednesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Begin, we'll do roll call beginning with agency member Vermillion.
Agency Ver, agency member Vermillion present.
Agency member Bartholomew present.
Chair Kaiser present.
Agency member Childress present.
Agency member Schenkel present.
Agency member Gilmer present.
Agency Director Huff present.
City Recorder Kristi Tietz present.
Finance Director Cindy Sharon present.
All right, do agency members or staff have any changes to the agenda tonight? All right, uh, up first will be a consent agenda regarding MIRA meeting minutes, June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve, amend, or deny the consent agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Christie, we call the roll.
Agency Member Gilmer.
Aye.
Agency Member Schenkel.
Aye.
Agency Member Childress.
Aye.
Agency Member Vermillion.
Aye.
Agency Member Bartholomew.
Aye.
Chair Kaiser.
Aye.
It's a mouthful, isn't it?
Up next, we're going to have a public hearing. This item requires a public hearing. I am opening the public hearing for MIRA Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash oh-one, adopting the Malala Urban Renewal Budget, making appropriations, and declaring tax increments for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six fiscal year at nine oh-eight. The purpose of this hearing is to hear a staff report and listen to public testimony. Does any council member wish to acknowledge actual or potential conflicts of interest? All right. Finance Director Sharon, council's ready for your staff report.
I move to adopt the MIRA Resolution.
You did?
Twenty-two-five oh-one. To, I'm sorry, I'm tired. Start over.
All good.
We all are.
The Malala Urban Renewal Budget Committee reviewed and acted to propose MIRA budget on May twenty-first and approved and recommended a balanced budget to the Malala Urban Renewal Agency for adoption. I move to adopt MIRA Resolution twenty-two-five oh-one, a resolution adopting the Malala Urban Renewal District Budget, making appropriations, declaring tax increments for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. The recommendation for the budget is four million nine hundred eighty-five thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars.
All right. Does council have any questions? Okay. Public comment for this item is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or opposition? And nobody's jumping, so I will close this public hearing at nine oh-nine. Up next, ordinances and resolutions, MIRA Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash oh-one, adopting the Malala Urban Renewal Agency, making appropriations, and declaring tax increments for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six fiscal year. Cindy, do you have anything you'd like to add? All right. May I have a motion to approve, amend, or amend MIRA Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash oh-one, adopting the Malala Urban Renewal, Renewal Budget, making appropriations, and declaring tax increment for twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six fiscal year?
I move to adopt MIRA Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash zero-one, a resolution adopting the.
Twenty-two-five dash, to twenty-twenty-six, not twenty-one.
Dash what? Twenty-two-five dash zero-one?
Resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-one.
Oh, sorry, I thought he was going into your mind. Sorry, I'm tired, I'll shut up.
Thank you.
I'm all confused now.
You're doing great.
Okay. Where was I? Resolution adopted in Ameri, Urban Renewal District Budget, making appropriations and declaring a tax increment for fiscal year twenty-two-five dash twenty-twenty-six.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Christie, we call the roll.
I'll give it a try. Agency Member Gilmer.
Aye.
Agency Member Schenkel.
Aye.
Agency Member Childress.
Aye.
Agency Member Vermillion.
Aye.
Agency Member Varma, Varma.
Aye. That was awesome.
Chair Kaiser.
Aye.
Made it through five of them.
Thank you. Motion passes six zero. You're welcome. All right. This concludes the business for this meeting. Is there anything else for the good of the order? I'll adjourn this MIRA meeting at nine-ten.